I'd like to call the November 8th meeting of the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Steele, will you call the roll?
Mr. Gibson.
Here.
Dr. Orth.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Crisco.
Here.
Mr. Hedrick.
Here.
Mr. Brazani.
Here.
All present.
Did you all join me in the invocation and pledge allegiance by the Reverend Kevin Smith?
Let us pray. Most wise and eternal God, our Father, we're calling your name tonight just to say thank you. Thank you, God, for just being here with us, dear God, and for us to be in your presence. God, we pray tonight, dear God, just asking you to be with us throughout this meeting, God. God, we ask you right now, dear God, that you would just bless this county, God, and bless the first responders, God, bless our schools, keep them safe and in your care, God. And Lord, we pray tonight that anything that's said and done, that it'll be done, dear God, that you can get all the glory, and that you can get all the honor, and that you can get all the praise. Dear God, for us, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
This is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move to the approval of the minutes from May 2nd, May 16th, and June 6th. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll move to the adoption of the agenda. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the consent agenda, there are no items, so we'll skip that. Matters presented by the board. First, I'd like to congratulate all the winners in yesterday's election, and thank everyone who ran. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to you.
Congratulations.
All right. Anything else? Anyone else? Dr. Orth.
Just a quick comment. So, you know, I was at the polls for 13-plus hours and interacted with a lot of my constituents, which was very interesting. So besides the door-to-door stuff I did, got a lot of very positive comments about the county. There was one person who asked me, and I promised I would say this, he said he wanted to compliment the people who do the hanging baskets in Gloucester. He thought they were well-done, and he had some people visiting from out of state that thought the baskets were beautiful and wanted to compliment those people that maintain the baskets, keep them well-watered since we've had so little rain recently. Anyway, but he's had other things, and this was, it was kind of nice. Anyway, that was it.
I'm a little remiss. Tony, he's newly elected for Ware, so just wanted to congratulate him also. Move to county administrative items?
I will be happy to pass on that appreciation of the baskets to the Main Street Preservation Trust that does that. You may have noticed the green lights out front, and want to thank Facilities Management for their support of the county's participation in the National Association of Counties' Operation Green Light Program. This is our second year of doing that, where the week of Veterans Day, we change, exchange bulbs to green bulbs to show support and appreciation for our veterans. Like to congratulate Christine Joyce, our purchasing agent, who was recently named Secretary of the Virginia Association of the Governmental Procurement Association of the GP, and that association represents more than 1,000 procurement professionals. More good news, in August, I reported that the county won the Excellence in Finance Award, and late last month, we received notice of receiving the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the FY23 budget, and our finance director will have another brass medallion to hang, and we, I don't think we've ever missed a year, so everybody's afraid to be the first one to have that happen. With the Clean Community, they received a grant that, from the Department of Environmental Quality, that's based on the revenue from soft drink excise tax and the litter tax, and it is going to be doing an educational program against polystyrene or styrofoam and the new, and helping to educate people about the new law that will be going into effect, which will prohibit the use of that product. And then I have, I think I started like in July, if not even earlier, been keeping the board informed about the grants that we're trying for Gloucester Point Beach, so I just want to confirm that the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission is submitting a grant for us, and that just does the, it does the VEMS plan for the shoreline, and it's going to be just shy of $3 million, so we're keeping our fingers crossed, and it will do replacing the dunes, rebuilding, or rebuilding the dunes, replacing the grasses, and installing breakwaters at the beach. And we will know in December if we are a recipient of that flooding grant program. And then also for the public, to remind you that we do not have a work session in November, so the next meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be on December 5th. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is open broadband update. Eric Beach.
Good evening. Per the board's request, we have Kent Winrich, who is the Chief Technology Officer of Open Broadband, to give the board an update on where we stand with broadband in Walrus.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here tonight. Just waiting for the presentation to come up. There we are. Update for today, November 8th. Our progress is, we have major progress moving forward, and we're never done, and we got a forward path on how we're going to describe how we're moving forward. So, we've taken down all the Nokia equipment, the equipment we had up before, and we've installed the new Tirana equipment. All tests with Tirana have been a major upgrade for all the past customers that we've had before, and we now have, our mapping tool is completely accurate. Here's a location of doing, one of the, some of our people doing some testing at a location. Here's an example of some of the upgrades. So with the Nokia equipment, we had the smaller, little, smaller image. We had 105 meg download and seven mags up. With Tirana, we have 217 and nearly 60 mags upload. This is the same tower and the same customer location, just different equipment, the exact same locations. So this is a 3.5-mile trip down to Rose Point, which is actually in Matthews County, but just a good example. Here's another one, another customer's getting 370 mgs down and 73 mgs up. And here's a site, it's a little hard to see the screen, but this site was previously unserviceable, now they're getting nearly 105 down and 22.6 up. Example of the success story is a family using Verizon, Verizon Hotspots. The family contacted the FCC, Congress Person, even the county. We were contacted on Wednesday, and by Thursday, they were installed with proper speeds, and that's the example of just up the road of what their location looks like. So where do we go, going from here? Our present tower that we have over at Landfill, it's a little hard to see on the screen here, I apologize for that, but it covers about half of what we're supposed to be covering for Vatty. So we're lack, lacking some of the area near Pampa. So what we're going, oh, thank you. So what we're going to do is, and I spent most of the day today working at a tower that's already existing up, up north of Pampa, and it's over by Thousand Trails Campground. And so that tower is to the right, and I've got all the Vatty addresses listed in here as well, I'll zoom in a little bit on this, but it fills in that whole area, it fills in that whole north area, and if you can see, each one of these dots is within a color scope of, of range. So with the testing we've done recently, and with the adjustments of the map and consulting with, with the manufacturers, we know that the, these RF maps, these maps are accurate, and we could, we know we could reach each one. Yes, sir?
What are the white dots? A lot of them?
Oh, there's, there's a lot of white dots in there, but that's areas that we don't anticipate coverage in, but we're just, we're trying to cover the, the Vatties, making sure we're covering the Vatty addresses for the grant. Now, we're covering more than that, and, and actually, after my meeting with the, the tower owners today, the tower is 75 feet higher than I mapped out in this, so we'll actually have better coverage than what we're seeing on the map here.
Where are the red dots?
I'm sorry?
The red dots.
The red dots are the Vatty addresses.
Okay.
Yeah. And each one, if you really zoom in, I don't know if I got one really tight. If you zoom in, you can see the outline of the house, and you can see exactly where the people need, our people need to install antennas to be able to get this proper signal. With the, with the second tower, and, I'm sorry, the colors don't show up on this, on the projector very well, but the, the second tower also gives us options to, to reach the, the customer, and so we will actually check out both, both sites to see which one's optimal. But there are many, many of these in here that will have an option to go one tower or the other. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
Do you plan on moving southward towards the Gloucester Hayes, Gloucester Point area?
Yes.
To give Verizon a little bit of competition?
Yes. Oh, we'd love to give them competition, yes.
One more question. So you got a little dot with a, kind of a, I don't know what you want to call it, a thing pointing in a certain direction. Is that because that is the way that tower's pointed that gives them the maximum bandwidth?
Good question. It is, it is actually what we call an access point or a base node, and that's the antenna pattern going out from that tower. Now, you notice they're just only, we're only concentrating right now on just the Vatty addresses. We'll get beyond the Vatty addresses once we accomplish what we need to do for Vatty. But that just shows the direction the antenna is pointing, so I know where, from a RF prediction aspect, I know where I'm going with it, and so that just shows where that direction that antenna is pointing. Yes. This is a North End Tower, this is Matthews County, I, I put this in as well, and we're covering, we're doing great coverage down at the North End Tower. And Roy's Point, again, Matthews County, I apologize for having this in here. So, we're working right now on that what we call the campground tower, which is up near Thousand Trails. I've already got a bill of materials submitted to our supplier for the equipment. It's just, I just need to sign off on it. We're already going through resumes to add in more, more installers so we can install quicker, and so we're, we'll start interviewing probably next week to add more installers. And that's my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I can provide, I can provide still images of these that, so you have them on your laptop so you can see better.
Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for being here. I imagine you traveled up from North Carolina.
Yes, sir.
Where your company's based. So, this issue is very, very important to me because I represent the Petsworth District.
Okay.
Which is in the northern part of the county, and most of that area is unserved with any broadband options. So, in doing a lot of research on this issue, and looking back at the history of this, the Board of Supervisors approved $2 million in ARPA funding in September 2021. It's now November 2023, over two years later, and most of my district, virtually all of my district has no open broadband service. I signed up for your service, got on the waiting list in the fall of 2021. I have never received any communication since that signup.
Okay.
And as a business owner in the county, if someone was to sign up for my services and then they didn't hear from me for two years, I think they'd be pretty dissatisfied.
As they should be.
And I get input from citizens almost every week, asking me, when is this going to be online? When is this going to be? And, and I can't, I, I don't understand how, with a $2 million investment, we are at a 26-month delay in implementation, and you're just now negotiating a tower agreement with Thousand Trails, which was on the Piankatank River near, right in my district. Can you explain to us why the planning for the placement of the towers and the planning for the equipment has taken 26 months to implement?
Yes, it is a combination of things. Some of the things that did not play out well is that are, are working with Nokia, which is one of the prime names of all, all wireless business, and their products did not live up to the expectations that we had to place into the county. So we took all that equipment down at our own dollar and replaced it with brand-new Tirana equipment, which is providing the, the, the speeds and the range that we were expecting. So it was a combination of, and unfortunately, the whole COVID thing came into play as well, but it's mainly the, the working with Nokia and not having their equipment live up to our expectations. So.
When was the switch, when did you decide to make the switch from Nokia to Tirana?
What was that?
We mounted the first equipment at.
Can you come up to the mic?
September.
Sorry.
Most people don't think I talk quiet, sorry.
We mounted the first equipment on the Landfill Tower, I think it was September 28th, and it'd only been probably a month before that that we put the purchase order in. A lot of the problems.
Of which year?
This year.
This year.
So you just started putting in the Nokia in September of '23?
No.
No, the, the Tirana.
Tirana, okay.
Yeah, the equipment that's up there now.
How long has the Nokia equipment been installed?
Over a year.
So it took a year to put in the Nokia equipment?
And it actually took a year for us to continually working with all levels of Nokia to provide a service that we found acceptable, and they just needed to live up to it.
So I reviewed your website in detail today, and it says on the front page, compared to fiber or cable, fixed wireless is much faster to deploy.
Yep.
And I see that you serve 31 different communities, 21 in North Carolina, four in South Carolina, three in Florida, one in Alabama, and three in Virginia. What has been your average timeframe of deployment in, in those 31 communities?
It has been more in the line of six months, as opposed to as long as we're dealing with right now. And the, one of the issues is that your terrain is very, very unique compared to some of the other areas. Your trees are very high and very dense.
But I see that in South Carolina, you serve Spartanburg and Greenville, a very mountainous and forested area. So how can you have better service in an area like that, and our area, which is largely sea level, with some exceptions, is so difficult to deploy this technology?
Because the mountain areas have very high peaks that we can work with the high, high towers, or even short towers on top of peaks that go down into valleys. In addition, the South Carolina, we actually bought an ISP down there, they were already established.
But I, I would assume Florida is a fairly flat area.
Yes.
And you, you've been able to deploy there within six months?
That's another ISP that we purchased, so it was already.
But have you deployed there yet? Is it up and running? You have customers?
Yes.
And so what's different about our area than Florida?
Well, again, this is an ISP that we purchased, the infrastructure was already there. We just replaced some of the radios to provide better service. What's different is that your trees are actually significantly taller here in Virginia versus Florida, and significantly denser.
Are you up in Alabama?
No, not yet.
You're telling me that the trees in Virginia are different than those you see in North Carolina?
They're, they're pretty, they're real dense here, very dense.
But, but the height, couldn't be, there couldn't be a significant difference between the North Carolina trees and the Virginia trees, is there?
I just see a denser, denser foliage here in Virginia than I do in North Carolina. It depends on where you talk about, North Carolina, eastern Carolina, it's mainly pines, and the like, you have a lot of deciduous trees here, a lot of hardwoods. In the mountains of North Carolina, we get much better because we have high mountain peaks.
Well, why didn't you advise us of this before you offered this service to our county at a price of $2 million, that our topography and our foliage would inhibit your service?
Well, it isn't inhibiting now, we're actually moving forward with Tirana, it's doing as we expect it.
But why didn't you advise us that you had technology problems in September '23 before you promised to implement this service and, and receive $2 million of the county's funds?
I think that we've actually been kind of upfront with the issues that we've had.
Well, we haven't, I have not received any communication from your company as, as a potential customer to receive this service, so have you, have you contacted anybody on the signup list who've been put on the waiting list in Gloucester County?
I will ensure personally that that's going to be rectified.
So what is the timeframe for implementation from today?
Right now, we're up and running on, on landfill, and we're adding customers on a daily basis.
I'm sorry, but that really doesn't answer the question. When can the residents of Petsworth anticipate being able to sign up with your service? Petsworth is the northern part of our county where the vast majority of your service was to go to.
I'm, I'm in negotiations right now with the tower up near the campground. We're moving very quickly on it. I'm, I would like to think it would be installed, ready to go by the end of the year.
So by December 31st?
That's what I'd like to see.
So, so you anticipate that customers in Petsworth will be able to sign up and receive, will they be able to receive service by December 31st?
It should be, we're planning on them, being, getting a received service at the end of the year, end of December, so we can get the installers going, and that's the plan.
Mr. Gibson, can I, and Mr. Chair, can I ask a follow-up question to that? The, I just want to make sure that, understanding about the tower because of the process and the time length, is that tower owned by Verizon?
Yes.
Or is it, okay. So, then, the application for zoning to change the equipment on there, will that be filed through Verizon, sort of like Crown Castle did in Matthews, that they'll take it?
I'm actually discussing that with the local engineer, there's an engineer here locally that manages that tower, so we're discussing that as we speak. I will be reaching out to him to, to, tomorrow again, and covering some of those details.
Okay. Because I just want to make sure the board is aware, and, I mean, it's part of the process, anytime we have a tower that, that uses like that, that it has to go through the zoning application, so the engineer's got to show that it, you know, it can stand up there, it's not going to cause any problems, and they get the engineer's sign off, and they've got to get the county to approve it too. So even if they're ready to go, we do have that little bit of a process to get through.
Carol, if I could, that Verizon tower at the campground is exactly like the one at Bethel Peaslee. It's a monopole owned by Verizon, so they're still going to have to go through the application process, just like they did with Terry over in Yorktown, or the connection he had over there. So that process will have to be approved by Verizon engineers, from there, we'll take their equipment list to make sure that everything falls correctly.
We already have our equipment list put together, we've already received a bid on the, two bids on the equipment ready.
So, I'm curious, why would Verizon allow you to put anything on their property? You're, you're, you're competing with them now.
In a way, yes, in a way, no. They're mainly interested in doing a lot of the cellular, the phone and tablet stuff. Fixed wireless is, is a different beast than, than cellular itself, plus they make a little money off of this, too.
So you've negotiated with Verizon in the past on some of their other towers?
Well, some of their fibers and the like, so we've, we've had some, some work with them, yes.
Thank you.
And, and the local engineer sees, doesn't see a problem with, with us being on, on there, and he and I would work together at making sure we don't have any interference issues.
Mr. Banks.
And, Ms. Brazani, I do believe through our, our zoning, that most of the towers that are in this county, we require them to provide co-location, so they have to allow competition on the tower if they build it in our county.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, sir. A question, where are we with the Bethel Peaslee Tower? The Verizon Bethel Peaslee?
I'm sorry, I missed the question. I missed the question.
Is that different?
The, it's a Verizon tower, and they had not completed the process because they knew they were going to have different equipment. So Verizon has said, yes, you can come on, but they have to, and it's sort of ready, it's primed, but they needed to make sure that they had the right equipment, that it was actually working because of the problems they were having. They did not want to go through and get the application completed at Bethel Peaslee and then have to redo the whole thing again.
So we do have the right equipment now, we're rolling, moving fast again.
We back on Bethel?
It's still on the Verizon tower.
Verizon tower?
Yes, it's never, it's, the whole time it's been for the Verizon tower since we said, but they just haven't submitted the application that lists all the equipment. And I, and I think for the public's sake, too, just to kind of make sure we're clear on, the northern part of the county is the priority, that is the Vatty Grant that is the oldest part of the broadband effort, and has the, the deadline approaching, which is actually December 31st, which we sort of gave a hint to the state people that we were probably going to need to ask for another extension, which we need to do now. And the, but the money for the ARPA was not for, it was for the rest of the northern part of the county, as well as the whole county. So open broadband with the funds for the ARPA grant would provide, or funds would provide for the whole county. So they've purchased equipment that's been sitting in storage, it's on our property. So the, the money went out and immediately purchased the equipment for the homes and things, and it's sitting and waiting to go out.
Is it outdated?
No.
Okay. The, excuse me.
That's okay. I guess maybe my question, I'm not very clear here. We were getting permission from Verizon to use their tower. Did we ever get permission?
We got the first step of yes, but in order for them to do the contract that goes through the county attorney, we have to have all of the engineering done. And so they require a list of all the equipment that, that a company wants to put on the tower, and that's where the process stopped because they weren't sure what equipment they were going to put up there.
We, we do now know what is going to be up there, so that tower, in addition to Thousand Trails, that tower will have the same equipment on, so we just work on those in parallel.
Okay. I'm, I'm asking because, and you know the church.
Right.
The, the church and the issue with the tower, when they walk out of the church, they're looking at the tower, and that's when we decided to ask Verizon. That's been over a year ago.
It has been, and there's, there's nothing other than this whole process of the equipment not working and sort of hitting quite a few walls, but there's no problem with Verizon at this point. I mean, it's just a matter of.
If we can just follow up with them and let them know.
And, and we have done that because through, through Terry, who is our communications person, and he's got the contact. The other tower that they're ready to go up on, and they already have the permit, well, part of the zoning permit done is for the 606 Tower. And then I think the, the water towers at Page and at Gloucester Point will be the next. So it was like, everything should go and start stair stepping, you know, but I don't, I don't want to be misleading because I, I know it's going to take a little bit of time, and it's going to be to the end of December, probably, like you said, you might start rolling at that point. But I don't want people at Gloucester Point to think they're going to get broadband in, you know, December or something.
So when you finally, you know, installed the system in Petsworth, as Mr. Gibson had indicated, are your prices controlled by the SEC?
No, not yet. They're trying.
So you can conceivably charge any price you want, or any price increase you want, any month that you want, at this point in time?
We haven't, we've always been competitive within the market that we're at, we're never charged anything wild.
Okay.
If you take a look at our other markets, we're all reasonable in our markets. I, I understand your concern about that, though, and we're, that's not the way we operate.
Mr. Ed.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gibson is the supervisor at Petsworth, I'm the supervisor at Ware District, or if you, are you familiar with Ware District?
I believe I am.
Okay. When can we start seeing some progress in my district?
So, I mainly did the presentation for the Vatty Grant today. All of that work that went into the Vatty Grant applies to every other mark, every other area within the county. So I, it may seem a little laser-beam focused on this, it's because we do have a specific deadline for that, but all that work that went into this. But all that work that went into this gets applied to everybody else within the county. So that involves all the, the bill of materials, all the equipment that we're going to be putting on the towers. Um, we're, we're moving very fast and forward with this right now. So when, um, uh, I, I don't have an exact date for you right now, but I'll tell you what. I will make sure that I'm communicating with the board, um, more, more often and keep you all up to date personally. So that, um, any updates that we have, I can send it to Carol or whoever, however you like it, and I'll keep you up to date. I think we've done a, a poor job of communicating with you all. I will change that right now.
Okay. Um, I've got a couple of questions. So is the campground tower part of the VODI grant?
Yes. Not originally.
Not originally, no.
So it's an add-on?
Right, at our.
And that's the same sized tower? Is that, that you've got equipment for at the Verizon over by Petsworth?
Well, that's what we're going to be installing on that tower, yes.
But is it the same height tower?
Petsworth, I think we're talking about the same tower, the one there at, at, uh.
There's one at Bethel Peaslee.
Bethel Peaslee?
That's not at Petsworth.
No, Bethel Peaslee.
So the Petsworth would be the one near Thousand Trails at the old Gloucester Wood Products? Are they the same height?
Height.
Uh, I'm not familiar. I'd have to check and see what the one is at, at Bethel Peaslee. I'm not sure.
I will find out and get back to the board.
Well, I guess my question was, you've got a tower that you said was, when you did your model, that when you came out and saw it, it was 75 feet taller. How come you didn't check the height before you modeled it?
Because it turns out Verizon doesn't have their heights published in the database that normally corresponds to a tower location. So it wasn't there to use. So we used a, what would you call that? A, a not aggressive height?
Right. Yeah, I wanted to be at least, um, conservative on my, on my estimation. Most towers are listed in what they call the FCC ASR, uh, data bank. That one was one of the few that is not. So we had to do our own research into it. And so I initially did an estimation on the, on the height. Now I have the exact height of what it is, but all the other towers that we're working with are in the, are in the FCC databases.
I, I just, with the computers, I find it odd, but you know, every little boy scout learned to measure heights. You've sat there and figured distance and everything else and you can get a rough estimate on how tall something is. I just can't believe that you did a model with not having the right height. To me, that's just crazy. I, I, I'm just disappointed. I'm at the point, so I'm not really affected by it, but I think it's ridiculous that it's taken as long as it has.
Sir, your mic's not on. Or, or it's not close enough then?
It's not close enough. Um, I'm not going to repeat that, but, uh, I just think that it's just taken forever to get this done.
I don't disagree with you.
Mr. Bazani?
Thank you. Um, I recall years and years ago that Ron Peeks put in, we bought him a height, um, a machine that can measure heights on houses. And it could, it, it was very, did, do we still not have that equipment to let these good folks use it?
Well, we have our pictometry, but I, I think two things I want to point out. One is that the towers can be all different kinds of heights, but when you're competing and wanting to be on somebody else's tower, it doesn't matter what the height of the tower is as much as it matters of what height you're wanting on that tower. And there's prime places and less than prime. So fixed wireless has a range that they work within. And some of the, and the taller, these, these cell towers are taller because they're cell towers. And so there is a difference in their science, um, how that's done. And as far as why it wasn't listed, it is the county's, uh, most recent tower that Verizon put in with that one and the one that's going in on Oscar. But the other thing I wanted to do is just give a quick update on to the Ware District.
Miss Steel, wait a second. If there's an ideal height that it has to be, what does it matter if it's 75 feet taller to get better range? Then it must be a, a wider range.
There's a range and I, I would let them state to that. I, I, I just know that they can be on towers that are over the height of the trees. But you can have a tower that's 325, or they might have a tower that's 225 or less. And, and that's the difference between the cell towers and some of the other towers that are around the county. Um, our communication towers are not as tall. Um, they're only 200 feet. But the other good news, I think we need some because we definitely have a, a problem here. The three small towers, which are hub type towers, one of them for Wernach. The other one, not Bethel, the other one, um, gosh, I'm drawing a blank right now. That's right, Achilles Elementary School, Wernach, and then the Harkom, um, Fire Station, which may or may not be needed the same way. But they are lower. They're, they're shorter. Um, those all have been finally gotten through the site plan process. So now they're ready to go. We have the drawings that the county attorney needed before he could look at the, uh, MOUs and things again. It took that long to get through the site plan process?
So, so we're going to have?
On our end, no.
We're going to have the campground set up by the end of the year?
Would like to think so. It depends on the process through, through the county.
Well, I mean, I look at it that the poor kids of Petsworth aren't going to be able to track sand on NORAD this year again. I mean, it's, it's ridiculous that it's taken so long.
It is. It should not take, take this long.
Mr. Crisco?
Ms. Steel, how many homes were we trying to capture with, oh, first, what was the amount of the VODI grant?
Um, so for?
Do you remember?
600 and some odds, less than 700.
And about how many homes were we supposed to capture with that?
For Gloucester, 133 and then, uh, another 100 and some in, in Matthews. So it's 200.
So that was the onus of, uh, Mr. Winrich's propo- uh, presentation tonight was the stuff from the VODI grant. And yes, while I, I agree that it's taken a lot longer than we had liked. Mr. Winrich has, has spoken to that. Mr. Beach has spoken to that. You know, these are issues that, hey, you know what? If the Nokia stuff had worked, we wouldn't be having this conversation. Unfortunately, it didn't work. And these folks are, have been scrambling to do what they need to do to get the VODI grant done, which is a deadline that's fast approaching. And then, once we have that, I, I think we're on the right path now. I'm sorry it didn't get done as quickly as we had hoped. However, I think we have the product that we will need now to, to provide what we need to provide to our citizens.
Yes, Mr. Gibson?
Thank you for saying that. Just a few more comments and, and a couple of questions. Uh, I, I appreciate you being here. I know you had to travel here from North Carolina and that's not easy and that's an expense. And so I appreciate you being here to answer questions. Uh, so thank you for that. Thank you for your presentation. What is your action plan? You set a pretty tight deadline, December 31st. What is the action plan from today until that point to, to get this service up and running?
And we already have the equipment all lined up from two different sources. So everything going forward is everything to do with the tower and getting tower climbers lined up. So tomorrow, first thing in the morning, I'm meeting with the, the Verizon local engineer and we're going to move forward with that, with that whole plan. So it's, everything is about the tower. So we've got to push through as much as we can, as fast as we can. And if I may pile onto that just a little bit, um, we did have problems sourcing some equipment in the past. We no longer have that issue right now. I, I met with the, the Toronto CEO and Vice President a couple, about a month ago. And we were guaranteed, and we are guaranteed, that there's plenty of equipment available, so we don't have that issue of sourcing anymore.
Well, my, my colleague, uh, is, um, trying to let you, uh, giving you some, some leeway here. I, I, I really can't, given that we were talking about 133 people under this VODI grant. And in my district, the estimate is approximately 2,500 households that do not have broadband. This lowers property values. It hurts our students. It hurts our residents who want to run home-based businesses. It just hurts overall quality of life. Uh, people who want to communicate by video, they can't do it. So I, I appreciate your company wanting to invest in our community. I appreciate the, the competition that you would provide to other broadband providers. I think we need that. Uh, but I, I am, uh, I'm concerned that the communication has been extremely poor. And so I, I first would, I, I want your commitment that you're going to communicate, first of all, to our citizens. I, I, apart from this board, but I think the citizens deserve to know when this is coming, what are the updates? Because there's a lot of uncertainty out there in my district of, of when this is going to be available and it's a huge, huge need. So I would ask for that commitment and certainly would ask that you continue to keep our board informed.
You're, you're speaking loud and clear and I hear you very clearly. And this will happen. I will personally see to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just a quick question, um, a little bit of project management question. Do you guys operate under a Gantt or PERT chart that, that you can share with us?
We have, uh, we're using monday.com, which is project management. It's an online project management system. Let me see about what I can do about sharing that or how we could go about sharing that.
That would kind of give us a picture of where your schedule's looking like.
Right.
Going forward.
I understand what you're saying.
Simplified version of it. You don't have to have to give us the complicated, but the, maybe a simplified.
I'll, I'll check into that. I'm not quite sure how to do that, but I'll check into it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is citizen comment period. If you please come forward, state your name, magisterial district, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board, Ms. Steel, Mr. Wilmot, Howard Maurer, yours history. The day passed and the people voiced their opinion. Two-thirds of the voting population did not vote, giving away their current rights to the elected. An open door to expansion and more taxes. Three to five cents on the next budget cycle. Wait and see. The new board needs to work with the school board on how they are going to develop new debt plans for a new elementary school in Ware. What is not known is the capacity in New Renovati High School. This could be a major problem in the out years as the county becomes closer to a city in lieu of its rural atmosphere at the present. As I have said in the past, Interstate 17 will become six lanes wide soon. Many words have been spoken of the fund balance and the reserve fund of 14 to 16% for emergencies. Well, the fund balance is only a number derived from the expense side of the budget, not expended on the last day of a fiscal year. The annual audited budget shows an average of profit of 1.2 million. When the first day of July occurs, the new budget goes into effect, starting with the current funds available in the bank from the previous fiscal year. Except for a few restricted line items, the fund balance is just numbers. As for the emergency fund of 14 to 16%, it does not exist. It is a figure only. The treasurer has no funds in the bank to support a multimillion real financial sum, drawing interest to support the percentage on an annual basis. Disaster strikes, FEMA and long-term debt are the only recourse. A line item of special interest to the taxpayer is the tax revenue on all real estate as outlined and reported in the county land book. This large and comprehensive ledger compiled by our commissioner of revenue is certified in the middle of May of each calendar year and the second half of a fiscal year. Our current new fiscal budgets are adopted prior to the release of the commissioner's data. A line item of taxes to collect has already been established. When you go through the last pages of the land book, taxable dollars are presented. When compared over several years, using the budget approved and final figures, there is a gap of several million dollars over time, as much as 12 million or more. I would like to believe these funds are collected, but where are they in the revenue cycle of the annual budget? Surely they are not in the revenue side of the real property tax line item. A logical, a logical explanation would be appreciated and the other line items of this cycle do not apply. I thank you for the time.
Would anyone else like to speak during the citizen comment period?
Um, next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider a resolution amending the fiscal year 2024 budget. Ms. Callaway?
Good evening. All right. So this evening, uh, we're holding a public hearing to adjust the fiscal year 2024 budget. State code requires that we hold a public hearing anytime appropriations modify the budget by more than 1%. And so we've incorporated into this public hearing all current and future anticipated appropriations. Um, the largest of the public hearing requests is 3.65 million dollars for the utilities fund. And that's for the automated meter infrastructure that was just passed. And then also 2.47 million dollars for the schools of additional state revenue that they're anticipating receiving. Not all of the appropriations included in this budget amendment will be, will be appropriated this evening or requested this evening. Some of those will be requested at a later date. And I included a pay, um, a summary on page 72 of your board packet that outlines which dates we're expecting to appropriate which amounts. Um, so this request is for a budget amendment, as I mentioned. This is not appropriations. So we have some appropriations coming up later in the meeting. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right. Let's open the public hearing. Bring the citizen comment period. Anyone like to speak on this, uh, public hearing for tonight? Ms. Cronin?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right. We'll close the citizen comment period. Do we have any questions for Ms. Callaway? I don't know why she sat down.
She was trying to get out, she was trying to get out, wait for all those questions?
Yeah, all the citizens.
Any questions for Ms. Callaway? There's a resolution on page 71.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Um, Ms. Steel, will you pull the board?
Dr. Ward? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bazani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a memorandum of agreement for use of the old landfill by Gloucester Area Modelers Association. Mr. Baines?
Thank you, sir. Uh, tonight, uh, we've discussed this before. Uh, tonight we have, before you the actual MOU. Our county attorney can answer any questions about the MOU, but basically we have the president of the association here. If you have any questions, they'd like to use it. They were using, uh, over by, uh, Brenton Becky's bulbs. One of the areas has become a solar farm, so they need a place where they can fly their remote control drones, planes?
Just planes.
Just planes, sorry, just planes there. He's been keeping a runway cut over there in anticipation that you guys would approve this. So he's been helping us by going out there and actually keeping the area cut low. So it turns to grass versus tall weeds and other brush and, uh. Yeah. So in, in doing it, you'll see the MOU in here. If there's any questions, uh, he's here and I am, uh, happy to answer them.
Mr. Gibson?
Thank you for the presentation. I just have one question. I, it sounds like a very fun and interesting hobby. But the time range seems pretty wide in 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Are they really flying in the dark and?
No, it's the time of year and, uh, they, he, he explains that a lot of the guys, when they first set up a plane up, they like to go out and fly by themselves to be able to make sure that they manage it, control it. They normally do it on Sunday afternoons. That's their main time they meet. If on a weekend they haven't been able to meet because it's, it's rained or hit something else, they'll try to do it on, on a Saturday. They do it any other day. They got to get the written permission from the county if we want to allow them to do it like, have a little competition on a Tuesday. A little competition on a Tuesday or he's got people, they've got to come and get our approval first. They can't just go out there and fly other than those times. But I, I think the time was just because we didn't want to say 24 hours a day, but we wanted to try to be, uh, cognizant of the neighbors and such. We did talk to the sheriff. He didn't have any problems with the time.
Yeah, I, I, that's my concern is the neighbors hearing, the buzz of remote control planes at 7:00 AM on a Sunday morning might, might be a problem.
Yeah, I assure you that, uh, 99.9% of the time since we've been flying, uh, at, uh, Becky's Ball. Yeah, I assure you that, uh, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time since we've been flying, uh, at Becky's ball, uh, was actually, uh, the, uh, the nursery behind there, the Mob Jack Nursery. They actually sold that piece of land now. It's a solar farm, uh, but ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, we don't start flying until about noon. And we'll fly typically, if it's in the summertime, we typically stop about five or six o'clock in the afternoon. In the wintertime, obviously it gets dark at five thirty, so we're gone at five thirty. But I can definitely say ninety-nine point, I could maybe even comfortably say a hundred percent of the time, nobody goes out at seven o'clock in the morning. Eight o'clock, nine o'clock, ten o'clock. Uh, it's typically, you know, our club typically everyone flies between noon and until it gets, uh, late in the afternoon.
Well, would nine to six be an appropriate timeframe?
Y- yes. Basically it's the sun. Uh, you know, if in the summertime, sometimes we might fly until seven o'clock, eight o'clock. In the wintertime, we're restricted to when, when it gets dark, you know, none of our planes have, uh, lights on them or, uh, we don't have a lighted runway. So we've got to, uh, uh, you know, only fly when there's light. And we follow strictly AMA rules. So we're not just a club that flies model airplanes. We are under charter and we are under restrictions and obligations by the AMA, which is a FAA approved, uh, flying, uh, institution.
I'm not trying to restrict your hobby, but I just, I just want to avoid problems for yourself and for the community.
We, we will not, if, if you want to get rid of, uh, say, you know, say ten o'clock in the morning, that's fine. There, no one's going to be out flying at seven o'clock in the morning.
I'd like to hear the input from the other board members. I, that's just something that jumped out at me. I'm welcome, welcome others' input on the timeframe. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
And I can say for thirty years since they were at it Mob Jack, we've never had one complaint of any noise or any timeframe that we were flying.
What, what fuel do they use to?
We don't use fuel no more, just batteries.
Just batteries.
Just batteries, electrics. So you don't have that, that, you know, twenty, twenty years ago, you go out to a flying field, you know, you can't hear each other talk. You know, now it's, uh, all electric and you can hold a conversation, two guys flying right next to each other.
Cause I've just seen some videos of planes crashing and fires.
Hmm, that's gasoline or, you know, that's, uh, gas and, uh, fuel powered airplanes, which.
You do not have them.
We do not, uh.
Saying on the landfill, that was a concern.
So. That's a good, that was a good question. Two questions, actually. Can spectators come and watch?
Yes. Per the AMA, but we have AMA, we have rules, so there's a spectator's area.
Okay.
Uh, so people who come to watch are restricted behind a line that we'll have set, that'll be signed, uh, that'll say, you know, spectators pass this point. Uh, but spectators are, you know, we encourage people to come and watch us fly because we want them to gain interest, especially they're kids. You know, we want the young people to get involved, uh, with flying airplanes, especially today because there's more technology that, you know, the younger generation, uh, is, uh, you know, kind of likes. It's, it's a different, flying today is much different than it was twenty, thirty years ago. Uh, there's much more technology involved. A lot of these planes that we fly out there now actually have flight controllers. They can actually take off by themselves, they can land by themselves. If a flyer gets into a tricky situation, you hit one button and the plane will level itself out and head back towards the runway. Uh, there, there's some really interesting technology now that, uh, with these small planes.
So the question, the other question I had was, you know, they have jet engines now that are about the size of this bottle right here.
Mm-hmm, sure do.
Does any member of your team have jet engines out there?
No, we don't have, uh.
They're loud, they're loud, as loud as a jet airplane.
The, the jet engines that we run are what they call fan inducted, which is electric.
Okay.
So there's no one, uh, that we have, uh, we don't have the runway or the room to fly, uh, fuel powered jets. None of our club members have twenty thousand dollars for one of those jets anyway, so it's.
So, yeah, what's the runway length that you guys need for these planes to actually take off?
Runway length.
Runway length.
Um, it's depending on the size of the aircraft. Mostly we need about three hundred feet for wheeled aircraft or aircraft that has landing gear. Uh, I will say fifty percent of the, the planes that we fly don't require any runway. They're just hand launched.
And would we, would, you set up about a six, a six hundred foot runway and can you remember how long the one is at the old landfill?
Uh, right now we're setting at about five hundred and fifty feet.
And the runway is over top of the landfill, the visitors area, the area that they have to do all their setup and when they have their people, whatever they do to their planes, tards things up, is all on an area that is natural earth so that we make sure where they park and everything else isn't on top of the landfill.
Yep.
Only the, uh, only the runway.
Uh, and I did mapping runs, uh, I do have a drone, by the way. I do a lot of mapping as part of my business. I have mapped out the area, overlaid, uh, my mapping mission to, uh, where the, uh, the, uh, the liner is located uh, or the two liners that are located at the landfill. Uh, so we can see, we know where the liners are at. Uh, we know where we'll be staging and parking, which is not in a, uh, liner area. It's all natural earth. The runway does. Seventy percent of the runway is over top of the liner, but there's nothing that goes in the ground there. Uh, the other thirty percent is not on top of the line.
And what height do you fly and what distance do you?
We're restricted to AMA, which is four hundred feet.
What about the distance around the landfill? How far can you go from the landfill from your?
These radios can go quite a ways. Um, so we, all the airplanes that we fly are all line of sight. So when you got a plane that's this small, you're not flying it very far because you're just going to lose sight of it. The bigger planes, you could fly a little bit further away, but it's all visual. So we don't depend on like, say drones and things like that. It depends solely on the flight controller. It's all visual, and that's per AMA rules. You have to be, uh, your plane has to be in sight.
So on a typical day, how many people are out there with their planes?
A typical day with our club can be anywhere from four to as high as ten.
Mr. Chair, I was going to suggest, I think Mr. Gibson brought up a good point, and, um, you do have a resolution, um, to approve this, but I was going to suggest maybe nine AM. Um, if y'all want to go later and then maybe to say eight PM.
How about a half hour after sunset?
Yeah.
And I, I think the county attorney usually doesn't like when we use sunset. That's the only thing.
It's every day.
It's subjective, even though it's a post of time.
Varies and, and everyone knows when seven is, but sunset could be seven twelve, it could be seven thirteen.
You can look it up every day.
Oh, my gosh.
It's right there at you.
Like, they're going to do that, I doubt.
Well, they can't see it, they would do it.
But you're certainly welcome to do that.
Well, I mean, I was waiting to get all the questions before we worried about time. Any more concerns?
Now, it does say they can't traverse the property, so they have to keep all their planes above the property. That's the way it's worded.
Okay.
Can't go off property. Don't know that's a problem, but that's what it says.
Did you say nine or ten?
I discussed nine AM, but now that I hear that, I'm sorry, now that I hear that they're electric primarily, the noise issue is not as much of a concern. Uh, but I, I think Ms. Steele's suggestion of eight PM sounds reasonable. I don't, nine to eight, nine AM to eight PM.
Is it okay with you?
Oh, I'm, yes, we're fine, we're, we're not going to fly in the morning.
I, I think that's a great time because you may have somebody who goes out just to test.
Yeah.
But like I said, as, as a group, they wouldn't be normally hitting there until noon, but, so I, I think they're more than happy to work with that. They really wanted to do something here and so that their, their club can do something where they can continue to fly. They haven't had a place to fly since the solar farm's gone in, so they're really eager to get onto this property.
I think it's a great hobby and it's great that you're trying to get kids involved with it, so.
Yes, and we would, uh, one of the things we'd like to, you know, we're going to propose to, uh, George later on is, uh, we'd like to prepare another area out there for kite flying, especially, you know, something to attract kids, the younger generation. Clear a good little area out there that they could walk to to fly kites. Cause on windy days, when you need to fly a kite, we're not flying airplanes on a windy day. So a lot of us guys have stunt kites, so we could fly stunt kites, but again.
That, that's another, I'm, I'm trying to get this guy through right now.
Okay, so nine, nine to eight. We really want to try to attract the, the, the kids is, that's what we're trying to.
I'll move the adoption of the resolution on page seventy-six with an amendment on page seventy-seven to paragraph one, uh, amending seven AM to nine AM and ten PM to eight PM.
All right, Ms. Steele, pull the board.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani? Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Ork? Motion carries.
Thank y'all.
Yes, sir. Next item is a request for additional appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty four, Ms. Callaway.
Hello again. So tonight for your consideration, we have several appropriation requests, so I'm just going to outline them and then happy to answer any questions you have. The first is a request for a two percent COLA for all staff that did not receive the full seven percent in this fiscal year. Um, so in the fiscal year twenty twenty four adopted budget, it, there was a seven percent raise included for all staff. However, the board only appropriated fi- uh, five percent for all staff with the exception of law enforcement. Um, so now we waited to see what the state was going to do. The state approved the additional two percent raise. We're going to get funding from the state to provide that for, um, all state compensation board employees, but we've included this in the budget already. So this is now to just appropriate that funding, and it is much less than what we had initially expected because we're only doing it from December one on. So that's that first appropriation, and it is split between general fund, utilities fund and social services.
Question?
Yeah.
Question, Mr. Chair?
So is that a recurring funding from the state or is this just a one-time funding?
The, the state generally does not take that funding back. They have now increased that and they're funding those positions moving forward at that level.
Into, into the future?
Yes, sir.
So it's not left to us to make up the difference after one year?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Secondly, we have several carryovers that are being requested. These are carryovers of unspent appropriations from fiscal year twenty twenty-three, starting with the ARPA fund. We have, uh, three hundred one thousand dollars for the library renovation. That's unspent from fiscal year twenty-three, three hundred sixty-four thousand for the broadband portion of ARPA to be carried over. And then in the capital fund, we have a hundred and eighty-six thousand for broadband, two hundred and ninety thousand for the county funded portion of broadband. So we have three, three branches of broadband funding. And then, uh, finally, two hundred thousand dollars in the capital fund for the library. Then I'm going to jump down to the utilities fund. As I've already mentioned, we've, um, we've now budgeted for the three point six five million for the automated meter infrastructure for the utilities fund. So we're asking that that also be appropriated. This is loan funding, so three point four of that is for project expenses, two hundred fifty thousand dollars of that is for the cost of issuance. No out of pocket, this is all incorporated in the loan. Finally, uh, the Children's Services Act, where, uh, Ms. Kersey has brought to our attention that, um, there's a shortfall in the funding for, um, children that have been mandated to receive certain services. Uh, she's estimated she will need an additional seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars to fund these services through the end of the fiscal year. So what we've done is gone back to see where we may have some funding available for that in the general fund to transfer to Children's Services. And, uh, we have a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars of surplus tax sales that we have received that were above what we budgeted. So additional revenue that we are suggesting we put towards this purpose. And then Social Services and Children's Services Act had five hundred thirty-two thousand dollars in unspent transfers from fiscal year twenty-three. So we're, we're asking to move that to this year and provide that to, to the Children's Services Act. Um, and I was just going to, Ms. Kersey is here for those specific questions.
Mr. President. Okay, cause that was the question I was, thank you. I was going to ask the question, how did we miss the number by like seven hundred thousand dollars in estimate?
Yeah, I'll.
That's, that's scary to me that we missed it. Is that true, if we missed a number of that amount?
Good evening, everybody. Um, we didn't, sir, miss that. Um, what has occurred is there are certain children who are mandated by the Code of Virginia to receive services. The biggest increase we've seen this year is the, um, implementation of Gloucester County Public Schools, putting in a child's IEP for special education, a day education placement. These are children that cannot be educated in the public school setting, and a day placement is written into their IEP. That is mandated for us to pay for that service through CSA funding. It's not just Gloucester County, across the state, um, the average for per student is about fifty-three thousand dollars to educate them per year in a day, day education placement. Gloucester's averaging about forty-six thousand. So out of our one point five million roughly that in our original budget, we have used nine hundred and fifteen thousand, seven sixty-eight just for IEP placements. So this is, um, an issue that our CPMT has been discussing, and I've, I've had conversations with the school about this, with Dr. Tingley, who is the head of special education. We're seeing, quite honestly, across the board, not just with school, but for children that are mandated to receive these services. We're seeing some children with very difficult behaviors that can't be managed as they used to be.
So, so did we know about these mandates while we were doing our budget this past year?
We knew about the mandates, however, we didn't know the number of children that the school would write an IEP for. And when I speak with the schools, they are, schools are also having, um, staffing shortages. They're having staff that can't manage the behaviors these children are showing. So we had no idea as to how many children would have an IEP written for this type of placement. It also, and I don't want it to sound like it's just the schools, it's other children that are coming from our community as well as through the courts, maybe being placed in our custody of, of social services. In addition, I mean, there's been inflationary rates, providers have raised their rates upward of eight percent. Um, adaptive and foster parents got a five percent increase in maintenance payments. So it's been a culmination of things, but there is a large proportion of this that has.
So are you going to forecast these emergent expenses in your upcoming budget for next year?
Yes, sir, we are, and that can vary. I'll, I'll give you a good example. Within a three-day period, we learned of four more students that had this service written into their IEP. So to forecast it can be difficult, and we've been monitoring how many students we had in, in all the years I've sat on CPMT. I've never seen this many students being placed and young children being placed on an IEP.
Are, are these behavioral issues that you're dealing with?
Severe behavioral issues.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Kersey.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Maria or Ms. Callaway, excuse me?
There's a resolution on page eighty.
So I, I do have a question. When are we going to send this money to broadband that we're appropriating?
When, Ms. Steele, is that, yeah?
I was going to say, when, when they earn it?
Yeah.
I'm asking, that's my question.
Yes, we, we, we hold back percentages, uh, according to their contracts.
There you go.
All right, there's a resolution on page eighty.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Steele, will you pull the board?
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes, and thank you what you, for what you do, Maria.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Ork?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next item is Utilities Ten Year Plan Presentation Update. Ms. Callaway, Mr. Baines and Mr. Dawson. The trio.
Absolutely.
The triumvirate.
We've been busily working on this, and as y'all know from our presentation last month, we're back to kind of answer some of the questions that you had and to provide more information.
Oh, yeah, they're behind my bookbag.
Is this the broadband map?
This is your broadband. That's actually the reservoir. That's where we get all of our drinking water except for the deep well.
And it's impervious.
Yeah, impervious.
Impervious, yeah.
Tonight, what we're really here to discuss are these two sections proposed, ten-year, it's the. I don't want to go set up, I'll break the lights, but.
It takes an engineer.
Yeah, we'll train somebody else. So we're, we're here tonight to talk about the proposed ten-year, uh, budget and also the adjustments to incorporate some of the data that we've. and also the adjustments to incorporate some of the data that we've collected since we first talked to you. And this is very interesting. I mean, I've gotten more into this than I ever thought I would be. But in dealing with the Utility Advisory Committee, Chris, Maria, and Carol, we've found a lot of information in this one to kind of bring y'all up to speed. So the agenda for tonight is a brief review and refresher to remind you kind of what we talked about last time. New information on connection fees, water losses, and the Route 17 crossovers. That's for the projects that are beyond FY '23. And then you've got a handout that we're going to talk about because I went and presented this to the advisory, Utility Advisory Committee. Was it last Thursday night? It was last week. I had three night meetings. So it was one of the three nights I was down there. And they came back with some recommendations of their own that we'll provide you that's in the handout. So in, I see a couple people cheating, but they basically were talking about when we do rate increases versus the way we had first presented it to you. As you remember, from our expense and revenues, that we're looking at this to be basically on the revenue side, eliminate the indirect payments, operating expenses. Maria and Carol had looked at this. Yeah, you do this. This is your slide, sorry.
It's all right. All right. So we just wanted to do a quick refresher. This is a slide you've seen before. So just give you an idea, just kind of bring it back to what we've talked about before. So the 10-year plan that we presented has the elimination of an indirect payment to the county. So that gives a little more, leaves a little more in the utilities fund, does leave a little gap in the general fund, which we'll work on. For operating expenses, we did incorporate inflation. We looked at personnel-related costs going from 4% to 12% over the 10 years based on what we know now. And then all other expenses, we used a 4.35% inflation rate for the first year and then averaged it out to a 2.6% inflation rate in the future years. We also budgeted in some additional personnel that we expect we may need in the future. So that's not in the first year, but in the later years, fiscal year '28 and '30, we have placeholders for additional staff. And then the 2.6% inflation rate was used again for capital expenses. Couple other notes that I didn't have in my notes, but I'll run through. You know, the budget estimates. We also incorporated a $2.50 equipment or technology fee that we have recommended begin July 1 of 2024. And then also some other fee increases, which we'll discuss this evening. That's what your handout's about and we're going to circle back to that at the very end. Also, we've thought about the use of revenue bonds for fiscal year '30 and '31 to fund other capital needs once we get to that point.
Question? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ashlyn.
The equipment fee will be for the AMI meters? Is that the reasoning for the equipment fee charge?
Yes, so the equipment fee was basically what we are paying for meters right now. If we charge that 2.50 per month, when the meter's life expectancy is gone, we'll be able to buy a new meter without taking that out of the operating. Right now, any meter that fails, we have to take it out of our operating budget. So people are basically getting new meters without having to pay for them. So we want to have that tied into it.
In my follow-up, because you provided a lot of information there, but will we have all of the AMI deployed by that time?
Not by, no. We will actually start deploying about that time. The first six or eight months, they have to build what they call the DCU, the data collection network. Once they do that and they get the cloud set up, we move all the accounts into it. They do all that before we put the first meter in the ground.
Okay.
So six to eight months is when they put the first meter in. Then they'll just roll right on through.
So just my question real quick. This is just meter installation and not expansion of the sewer and water system?
That's correct. This is all just replacement of the existing meters we have.
And you're not hoping and praying if you decide to expand that these people want to pay for it?
No, but if you look up there, the very top assumption under budget is we are looking at a growth rate of 3.25 over the next 10 years. That's basically the reserves or other subdivisions that are on water and sewer. We're estimating we're going to get about 170 homes a year on water and sewer.
So this is for new construction, not for existing?
That's correct. Not any expansion.
Because we've had issues with existing, they don't want to pay.
Right now, our utility system has 5,300 customers on water. We have less than 2,000 on sewer. We're not going to make any of those others be connected up to sewer right now.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. Oh, here it is. All right. So another just reminder, you'll also see this in your handout, which I'll get to later. This is how we proposed the structure and change, structure change and rate increases in the 10-year plan. So we recommended the $2.50 start in July 1 of 2024 and also restructuring the sewer rates. So taking out those top tiers and bringing that seven-tier system down to three tiers. And then a $1 water rate increase per tier in '26 and also in '29 and staggering that with a $1 sewer rate increase in '27 and '31. So over the 10-year period, these increases would yield approximately $7.5 million in additional revenue based on our current calculations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Maria, has this all been vetted with the Utilities Committee? Have you gone through this with them?
Yes. Last Thursday, I was at their committee meeting. We spent the whole night, 7:00 to 9:30, going through this. So they had some recommendations.
And they had no questions or concerns?
No, well, at the end, we'll do their summary, but I will tell you, they're all in.
They grilled in.
Okay.
Yeah. One of the other things is, as you see on this one, Mr. Bizani, the water rates will affect all 5,300 customers. Those sewer rates will only affect the 1,900. So half that rate increase won't affect but a portion of our customers. Do you want to do this one? Yeah. So this is one of the ones I use for the Utility Advisory Committee. So when you look at this, you see the fiscal years across the top. All this is really explaining is we're starting to be able to generate more funds than we're spending. So Maria and Carol, as you look across inside the red box, it shows that over these next 10 years, we hopefully will have in FY '34, a development fund balance of $666,000 and a unassigned fund balance of 9.5 million. It'll be the first time that we've actually brought money back into this. Over the last three years, we've actually taken money out of that fund balance each year to balance our budget. So we're planning to have money that we're making more because at the end of, in FY '34, we're going to show you that we've spent about 25 or 26 million. We still have 27 million we've got to spend after '34. So this nine gives you a great start on how we finance or spend the next 10 years of capital improvements. All right, you want to, you go back to the fees?
Yep. So this is a new slide and a new section that was derived based on some of our conversation we had after the last meeting. So what we did is went back and looked at the connection fees. And we, I provided the report done by the HRPC that compares the fees of all the varying localities in your board packet. That's on page 103. So what we did is tried to look at any other localities that were nearby that we could compare the rate structures because some of them are very difficult to compare. So as you see, these other four localities, the blue is the, are 5/8 by 3/4 inch meters. So those are the generally residential meters. And then the 1-inch are generally considered to be a commercial meter. And that's in the orange. And this is what our connection fees are if for both of those types of meters. And you can see that we fall second out of the five localities in the lowest connection fee for the 5/8 by 3/4 meter and versus fifth. So very, we're the lowest connection fee for the 1-inch meter out of these neighboring localities. So this is essentially, this is comparing the same four localities. And what we did here was gave you the actual dollar amounts. So you could see those red being the highest and green being the lowest. And this is going across the meter size. So 5/8 by 3/4 inch, you can see we're kind of in the middle being yellow at $4,000 compared to the larger meter sizes, 1-inch on down, where we're green. We're the very lowest for each of those larger meters. So what we were trying to show here is that, just give you the information that we are low in that larger-sized meter when you compare it to the other localities. And that way you can, you know, decide if that's something you'd like us to pursue looking into those fees as well. But just to clarify, increases of these types of fees are not included in our plan currently.
We had a 30-minute discussion at the advisory committee about that size is like over a million gallons a day flow. We do not. But in everybody else's fee structure, they show those. But that type of water flow, I guess you'd have to be, you know, water country or somebody who needs water. We won't ever have anybody.
That's the largest we have.
We have a 4-inch and like two 2-inch, right?
No, we have two 4-inch and probably not 10.
2-inch.
Well, we don't have, we have three-inch and we have two.
But 4 is our largest and that would be normally to a community that's not metered individually. It would be metered otherwise to something like them. But we don't have anything larger than 4. And like you said, two fours, several threes and twos. So almost all ours are 3/4 or 1-inch.
If I can just real quick, as Ms. Callaway just said, the recommendations do not include raising any of these fees. So the board may want to consider that at some point now later. The other conversations we had about these fees are if at some point the board's concerned about growth control, this is one of the ways to do it. So if, you know, housing or commercial at some point, but we're low right now. We know that.
And if we're going to really take a hard look at this, I would like to see us address this all at one time instead of doing part of it this year, part of it in six months. I would rather take it, take it all at once and get it all done at one time.
Oh, go ahead.
And we also, you know, this is the group that comes from Hampton Roads. On the Middle Peninsula, our connection fees and rates are lower than the other two communities that have general water. That's Middlesex and Matthews.
Middlesex and New Kent.
I'm sorry. Oh, you did New Kent. Yeah, I'm sorry.
We're the ones that we compared.
The toys we compared them to. And I think we may have a slide. If not, we got some numbers. But we are by far a lot less per thousand gallons of water than those two are in the connection fees.
Yeah, I can share those numbers real quick. So for, I didn't include Middlesex and New Kent on this slide just because they were outliers and they weren't. We wanted to compare them with those localities that were across the river as well. But Middlesex, just for reference, is $10,000 to connect for that 5/8 by 3/4 meter. So that one where we're $4,000. And $25,000 for the 1-inch meter compared to New Kent, which is $7,512,000. So I have these numbers that I'm happy to provide to you, but I just looked those up on their websites. They're available. And I also talked with the Finance Director in New Kent to confirm what I was, what I was looking at. All right. So this was water. I should have clarified that, sorry. We also took a look at the same connection fees for sewer. So for sewer, we actually had to compare different localities because it's a little bit different when you're looking at sewer systems. We are the second, we're right in the middle for the 5/8 by 3/4 meter. The blue bars there, but the orange, we're the second lowest for the 1-inch meter. So we're a little bit better situated with the sewer fees than we are with the water fees. And then I did the same comparison here. You can see we're yellow, pretty much in the middle there. Red, Smithfield's very high in comparison to what we have here. But you can see that same comparison within the sizes of the meters and the cost for the connections.
And then again, for what you're asking, for somebody that moves forward, almost anywhere we have water going forward, they'll be on water and sewer. So like all the subdivisions we got going in will be water and sewer. So this is what that fee would cost for them because this is both the water and sewer fees together.
Yeah, so I wanted to provide an example of what it would be if you were a, to use a 3/4 inch meter across these localities and connect. These are the fees, green being the lowest fee, red being the highest fees. I did put New Kent in there because it was, this was a more clean comparison. So commercial, Gloucester is the lowest at $13,500. And I'm calling it commercial. It's a 1-inch meter. It's generally commercial. And then the 3/4 inch were a little bit higher than York County, but situated lower than all the others. Or I guess even with Isle of Wight. This is you.
So I sent everybody this spreadsheet. Yes, sir? So I sent everybody this spreadsheet to try to explain things. We've actually even cleaned it up a little since then when Chris and I sat and talked. But this explains how we generate water that we make to sell. So in it, the untreated water is what we're pulling from the wells and from the reservoir. The third group across water treatment waste, that's from both our RO plant. You push water through a membrane. So all the water that gets a lot of the turbidity or the salinity, we have to waste. So it's almost in ours, Chris, was it over 20% of ours?
20%.
So 20% of the water you run through an RO plant is wastewater. So it leaves the plant unusable. And then the surface water, that's what we have our sludge, are basically our charcoal activated charcoal that pulls all the stuff out of it. So you take the third column, the water treatment waste, subtract it from the untreated water and it comes up with your treated finished water. That is per month what we've generated to sell. Now, we just don't make that number up. That's used basically on the demand and our water plant watches the water towers. That's why you see that one number that says change in storage volume. They just keep the tanks at a certain level. So if we're using a lot of water, they have to run a lot more time at the water treatment plant to keep that tank at that level. So it didn't like, we're going to say, well, next month we'll only do 41 million and the month after that we'll do 38. It's on our demand. So this is what our demand's actually showing us. The build is what we actually get off our water meters. That's the thing we've talked about with the AMI, that we're going to see those bills go up because they'll be more accurate. So you look at it and see build is at 29.9 and we made 40. That kind of gives you a little bit of a shocker that we're not quite where we should be on our billing. So, yes, sir?
Mr. Chair? Mr. Baines, just a question.
Yes, sir.
You know, when you put these, this water in a tower, how long does that water last before you have to change it all out and put new water in it?
Normally, you don't have to worry about that at all. Like our page tower, there's enough water that goes in and out of that tower daily that it circulates.
Okay.
Our three towers are at such different levels that right now, our other two towers don't get enough exchange rate. So the one at the point, we have to flush. So once every so many days with the, when the chlorine gets out of the water, we have to dump that water and refill that tank. So the one at the point, we have to flush. The page we don't. And the one up here, we have a recirc pump on so that it makes sure that whether it's going up or down, we're putting new water in it all the time. So, yeah. And we do, we are concerned about that. That's part of this one. It says maintenance flushing and you see the 1.5 million gallons. That's where we get calls for, you know, water on dead-end lines that again have the same issue as the water gets stale because it doesn't have enough of your disinfectant in it or we've got to dump the tower. So that maintenance flushing is our people doing the actual work to flush the lines when they get called out to do it. The treatment process usage is where we're doing the same thing. Inside the plant, we can meter the water that we've got and the stuff that we have to use as part of our process, like the sampling lines and everything else. We can do that. And VDOT, we provide them a meter so that they can actually fill up and use it in their trucks for, you know, during the storms and things for putting down salt and everything else.
Mr. Chair, one more question.
That's all right.
So the Gloucester Point Tower?
Right.
Doesn't get used enough such that the frequency requires you to flush it?
Yes.
Would it be more cheaper just to shut that thing down and find some other source of water to that tower?
It would sound like it would, but during high demands, like if we have a large fire or something else, we have to use that as a calculation in our, our calculation on what we have for fire flow. Isn't that correct? All right. So it's because of fire flow, we've got to have that extra tower so that for all the insurance companies, everything else, we can prove that you open that hydrant up, you can get 500 gallons a minute out for two hours. And that would not be all from the page tower. It would at that time take water out of that point tower. So it's all part of our system, but we are looking at doing the same thing we've done up here where we put a recirc pump on it so that it's continuously getting water flowed into it so we don't have to purge it. That's one of the ways we're going to try to reduce our numbers here also. But again, a small group, our list is long. It's not really at the top of the list right now. But we are working on it. So the, so the metered non-revenue water, we have to take off of the top number. And you've got the build water. So those two, when you add them together, the 29 and the 1/6 tell you basically how much water we know where it goes. The bill adjustments, there's people that call us every month. There was one lady was out of town for 10 days, had a hose bib on the back of her house that she didn't cut the water off. It broke. When she came home and had, I can't.
102,000 gallons.
102,000 gallons that month. And then, you know, and then she calls us and says, I don't know why my bill's so high. You know, they could go back and actually see when the demand was and how it ran 24 hours a day till she came home from her vacation and cut it off. Well, they will credit her on things like that where it's been an issue. Well, they will credit her on things like that where it's been an issue that wasn't, you got a pipe that breaks in your, you know, inside your garage. You don't know it till you come home from vacation and the water's running out under the door. So they do credits for those and that's what you see is the adjustments for leaks. That's where they're actually doing credits back to bills for metered water. So after all that.
What does it cost to process a gallon?
Do you remember, I think I have a number, but if I, no, it's, it's per thousand. Well, it's per thousand, ask them what it, what it is per thousand.
Exclusive of debt service, it's about five dollars.
And we bill that same a thousand gallons at about ten dollars.
Because it includes debt service.
Yeah, well, and, and everything else, but. Five dollars. So in, in looking at this chart, that un-metered non-revenue water, the, the bottom line is you see the percentage loss. Twenty-one percent, thirty-two, twenty-six, thirty-two. This came up after I think we knew the Burley Road was leaking, that we saw some of these numbers. That's also what AMI is trying to tell us that they can correct for us. That in that loss, because a lot of it's in meters that don't register, that we can reduce that number and we're saying by ten percent. So on those days where you see twenty-one, they could be down to eleven percent loss that month. Where it says thirty-two, we'd be down to twenty-two percent loss. We still have a fair number of leaks. Cold weather last year, is that when we found the uh, the one down in Achilles that was filling up the house to the, the windows?
Yeah.
So we've had, you know, some of these abandoned houses where the water's not cut off, you'll find that leaking. The nice thing about the AMI system is we'll have alerts. So when that lady who was gone for fifteen days and used a hundred and two thousand, that first day, we'll get an alert that says there's something wrong at that house. And we'll be able to go out and investigate it ourselves and stop having some of these leaks. So I mean, this AMI system is really gonna change the way we do utilities here and it's gonna help us a lot. But this was to show y'all basically where the water's going right now and why we have such a large non-revenue water amount.
Do you think this, uh, the, the losses that you will now know that our losses will help defray the cost of this whole system?
Yes, and, and well, what we hope is the revenue from the ten percent increase will help fund this system. So it's about the additional revenue.
But you were discussing that you don't know how much water's being leaked out and this system will now help you know how much you are now losing.
Yes. So that, that's the number there at the bottom and, and part of it's firefighters. We don't meter their water, so we have a few fires, it's not as much, they have a lot of fires, uh, there's more used. But we will do two things. One is we'll bill better numbers so that that, those, the un-metered water will go down so that we bill more. And the second thing Chris has found out is, once people start knowing that they can watch their water consumption, then they know when the kids are coming home from college and they go, hey, that's a five-minute shower man because last month the bill was this ridiculous. So we find there's some conservation once they start seeing what these numbers are. So both those things will help us reduce our cost. If we're not having to make as much water, if we're billing more for the water we've got, we'll do a better job of being able to fund what we have.
On the RO plant, um, what is the most, what is the biggest, biggest expense on the RO plant? Electricity to run the pumps? It is. There's, there's a company out there in California called Iso Barrick. I don't know if, I think I've given that information to you before. But they have, they have a system where it saves upwards of sixty to sixty-five percent of the electrical cost for running RO plants. Have y'all considered maybe installing one of these things?
We had a, a firm uh look at opportunities to reduce the energy demand and they're, they were looking at, could we possibly recover pressure on the discharge side of the membranes as well as a couple other alternatives? And they just, they've determined that the plant is too small for any of those technologies to be affected.
So in, in showing this slide, they do track this monthly. Chris has got three years worth of data on it. We're really hoping that once we do AMI, we could come back to and show you where these numbers are changing in, in a positive way for both the utilities' cost and for our, our customers so that the information we have makes us more efficient than we are right now. Let's see what the next one is, Maria. Capital Projects, oh, I guess that's still me, dag on it. All right, so this map and uh, we gave you handouts, did we give you handouts? We gave you handouts of uh, uh, an updated utility map. We had one from the twenty nineteen water study. So there's one that's the whole county and it basically shows you some interesting uh information. The first one you see on there is there are some subdivisions that, the subdivisions are the, the areas in gray. You see some subdivisions that are within the development district that don't have water or sewer and there's some that do. Those are again, decisions the board can make in the future if you wanted to e- e- extend, like Ms. Brizani was asking. You could see there's another subdivision that's up here and go like, well, shoot, we wanna do water and sewer into that area because we know we'll get enough customers to help fund that extension. That's one thing it shows. The second thing is very interesting is you see the yellow one that's up there near the top, that's the reserve. That's where the eleven hundred homes are gonna be, that's right there across from Lowe's. And down at the point, there's a little small one, that's Swiss Legacy, that's right off of uh Beckwith Farms. So those are the two right now that are putting in their own water and sewer. Yeah, and I was gonna say, I'm sorry, but to get it on the slide, we went this way. There was um, uh, Trish, is there, is there a way to flip up the other map? Can you do the other map for me? Drum roll, please. Yeah, no, yeah. Yeah, no, there you go, thanks, yeah, yeah, thank you. So, so this is the same, this is the same map that uh we have and uh, if you just take, Trish, and zoom in anywhere on it, you'll see that it, when it, when it comes up, it, it, we have a lot of detail for you. Anywhere on it, sorry, now it's gonna be hard to work, right? All right. Of course, I picked something's hard. Yes, but, but no, as you zoom in, you actually see water on one side of seventeen and sewer on the other side, green sewer, blue is water. It shows you where the different accesses are, like the one right in the middle that's going down to TC Walker and has the high school and the piece into Dunston, uh, Dunston Lane. Dunston Hall. And then right below it, uh, that's, that's right across from the yellow. Right below it, you'll see is where the uh industrial park is and across from it is Riverbend. So that's one of the connections we're talking about, looping that line by tying those two together there. Uh, this is all um information for y'all to start to help you make better decisions in the future. You also have maps that Rita made that were for north and south, they give you this, each one of the areas. So uh, we made copies so you can take them home, look at them. You have questions or you wanna understand about expansion, you could always call and ask. So these are what, these were four and there were uh three of them that were provided to you. All right, so. Yeah, yeah, well, hey, learning, what was it called back, Kentucky Pipe? Was that the first hydraulic one we had to do? Yeah, it's, it's a nightmare nowadays.
Party Cross was the one you did main.
Oh, I didn't do, I, I tried to do it uh on a computer, but nowadays, uh, that's one of the Chris's requirements. When they go in to build these subdivisions, they've gotta prove that they can have that fire flow. And one of the things took them the longest for the reserve was for them to do their master plan. It's seven or eight phases, I can't remember how many.
Eight phases.
And they could show one and that's the one they wanna build, phase one. We wouldn't let them start until they could prove that the last house in the very back could have the same fire flow as the front. And they have to prove that before we would even approve the uh site plan so they could go in. They approved all that now and they're starting to build. I'm sorry, Trish, you can go back to the uh PowerPoint. So that, this shows where uh, the, the water system is in the county and basically you see it's from the courthouse to the point. We've shown you this before. This was all the capital projects that we could figure out, we could do in the first ten years. The three colors are uh just out of their revenue, that's the white. Uh, the green, I think, was bond funding and the blue, no, blues bond funding and, and green was development or vice versa. Other way around, so the blue was development. So the development fund is the money that they get from the new connections that is to do uh, uh, support what the board had put in their um, uh, ordinance or.
It's in County Cove.
That uh, it was for growth of the system. We're not looking at growth of, this is, I got in a great debate uh, at the Utilities Advisory Committee because growth for them was, well, I don't see any new houses. I'm gonna like, growth to me as an engineer is supporting the reliability of the system for future users. So I've gotta make sure I've got these loop lines. I can't say, well, I got one pipe down seventeen and you know what? Uh, I'm gonna, just gonna go and keep adding houses at the point. If I don't have redundant paths for that water to flow like we had at Burley, we have a failure there. I've got less than twenty-four hours for every home south of there to run out of water. I've got less than twenty-four hours if someone has a fire to be able to provide water for households. So in doing, what we're looking at, the development fund was to help loop those lines, provide us with better fire flow and to be able to deal with that additional capacity we gotta provide to the point from a water plant that's at the north part of this whole area.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I'm looking at Terrapin Cove again and that's always been a.
Yep.
sore spot with a lot of us here.
Sure.
A lot sore spot with a lot of the residents there. Are you saying that we're gonna spend three million dollars to put water and sewer into Terrapin Cove or replace their system? And hope and pray that they pay for it?
Uh, that is sewer only.
Sewer only, so if sewer only, are we, you know, cause we, we sent out letters years ago and we got less than fifty percent of the folks back there said they weren't gonna hook up to it. What are we gonna do, are we gonna make them pay if, if, if we put sewer back in Terrapin Cove?
So on this.
Cause I don't wanna lose any money here.
No, I understand. So on, on this slide, the first four are redundant or upgrades to our water system. The bottom three are the sewer system, their recommendations that came out of the twenty-year plan. And the board at the time of that FY thirty-one and thirty-two, they can certainly make modifications to decide what they want to do and not do. We're just recommending that that's what's in the twenty nineteen plan and this is how we would fund them. By FY thirty-one, you may find everybody down there is begging for it because of some other issue, you know, some other, but they may not and we may at that time say, we'll skip Terrapin Cove and we'll go to the next one on the list.
Okay.
It may have to happen sooner, too.
That, that, well, yeah, depends what the state does for us, right? But anyway, but yes, sir, that's our, that's our suggestion today. Each year we'll update this to give you what our best recommendation is for the next year because it is a long-term plan. All right, this is the debt side of it. This is what Maria was mentioning, that we looked at three million and thirty and four point five and thirty-one and that's because we would have the debt capacity at that time. I'm learning some finance words here, debt capacity that we could borrow money. These, most of these are, when you look at them, Berkeley Point, Azalea Point, Lewis Avenue, these are to take care of the oldest lines we have. They're either two-inch galvanized or four-inch AC pipe. AC pipe, now when roots grow around it and the roots start to swell, they crack the pipes. So we get leaks where there's this bubble about the ground and they've damaged the pipes. The two-inch galvanized rust and it bubbles to the surface. And the other thing it does for us is it provides better fire flow into these older neighborhoods, especially at the point, to provide them with better fire flow than we have today. The thirty-one, that's again, the Hayes, oh, the Hayes Road water line improvement. Is that to extend that piece? I can't remember if that's to extend that piece down Hayes Road a little further.
That's to replace the existing six-inch asbestos cement line north or between Bellhaven Road and Dunston Drive with an upsized line to increase the capacity to move water to Gloucester Point.
Yep, and then the, the bottom two, Cedar Lake and Holly Springs, they were built in eighty-eight when we did the exten- expansion. But now the fire flow for those areas, we've got to be able to increase the, the line size to support the fire flows back in there. And the Vernon Franklin Street water line replacement is the water lines that go from Vernon that's up on the west side of seventeen, under the bridge and back up into Vims. So those, what those are and that's what we would recommend at this point in time of replacing and that's using debt financing versus our development fund. This was interesting, uh, in that same report, this is where we talked about uh, down there at the Gloucester Point Shopping Center. What does it cost to move sewer to the opposite side of the road or water? These are the costs for each one of those that were in that recommendation. The only one on there that is not a basically forced main or a pressurized water line is the very bottom one. The Villa Court Gravity Sewer gets our pump station eighteen, that's uh twenty-eight, that's right at the point, over to the other side where Gloucester Point Shopping Center is, the restaurant is, and the apartments are. Yes, sir, under, all these are under Route seventeen and the reason they're so costly is VDOT makes us put in a casing so you have something that goes all the way under the road, so if anything leaks, you don't wash the road out. Then you have to pull a pipe through behind your casing and hook it up. So the expense of all that is why these are so expensive across seventeen. But we wanna let you know, those are all the ones that are in the plan and what each one costs. So if you decided at Featherbed, let's say on the other side of seventeen, you decided that you wanted to, that, that large area they cleared that I guess is part of the um, um, the Ingalls. But if they decided to do something in that corner and they were gonna build a shopping center, that's what it would cost to get water to the other side of seventeen, right there. But those are the, the costs and where they all are. So we wanted you to be aware of those also because again, it lets you see where the growth was gonna be planned uh back in uh twenty nineteen.
Mr. Chair, George, I just wanna make sure, the, the bubble chart, did we forget to give that?
Uh, the bubble chart is uh, it's one of the ones you can pull up. Trish, would you please?
I think we have another handout.
There is, I didn't send it to y'all because uh, but I, we did do a bubble. This is a really, another nice map.
Cause the board had asked, where are the crossovers?
So, yeah, you have to zoom on that too, but we numbered them one through whatever and it shows what they are. And you know, Rita, the, the round means it's a certain type, the square means it's another. Water and sewer both are the squares, circle is water only, and it shows where they would cross the roads. You know, luckily at Short Lane, that was done when they extended the line all the way down TC Walker. So we're across seventeen there, but we're not sewer to the other side. And this shows those locations in the county. So that's information for y'all, I'll make sure you get a printed out copy. I'm sorry, Trish, I sent that to you without asking for a printout. My fault, but we got a lot of good data, we've been working on this for a while. Yes, ma'am. There you go.
So this is just rounding out, uh, this is a slide that we had in our previous presentation. So I, we've made updates in red. So just to uh let you guys know the things that are not in this plan, we have about four and a half million dollars worth of pump stations, upgrades and uh rehab or repair of collection lines that we have not included in this plan and we're actively seeking other sources of funding for that. Whether it be grants, we're working with a, you know, a, our consultant that we already have um with the FEMA projects, looking for opportunities. So that is not in this plan. And then beyond fiscal year thirty-four, as George mentioned, um, we, you know, we're building that fund balance through uh bringing up our revenue over time while still making the change, the, the repairs we need to make. But um, we have still twenty-seven million dollars worth of projects that we're expecting will need to be done fiscal year thirty-four, beyond fiscal year thirty-four. So the red items, we actually went through line by line of the um twenty nineteen plan, which was not very well labeled. So we went through to make sure that every single project, uh, the names and such didn't cross over and we didn't duplicate or leave a project out. That resulted in about uh, three and a, three point two million dollars of projects. Well, what we basically did is that twelve million, we crossed out. We added in those other specific numbers that we now have verified. And it brings us up to twenty-seven million dollars, which we had originally estimated at twenty-five point six million. So that, that's what we have left over. So finally, uh, action steps. So we're gonna go through this slide and then we'll touch, we'll, we'll explain the handout that we gave you. We wanna use the, the ideas to gather um feedback from the board, get your direction and where you'd like us to go. To use this plan as a basis for future budgets, specifically the fiscal year twenty-five budget, which is already underway. By potentially incorporating the two dollar and fifty cent equipment fee, also maybe a sewer tier restructure. And uh, what we would need to do as far as a public education campaign to let the public know once the board has made a decision on a direction.
Thank you, so um, with the decision on the referendum, will that money be, be freed up so that you can use some of that for the projects you're thinking about now?
There, well, the referendum was based, was project, was to borrow money, so we don't have freed up money from the referendum.
Well, now you have the capacity to borrow money since the referendum did not pass.
And that's two separate funds. So what we're proposing here is to utilize the utilities' fees, which are to pay for the utility system.
We weren't proposing to use general fund dollars for any of this, we're trying to make utilities do this.
Self-sufficient.
And, and part of the reason for that is that any grant application, financial benchmark does not include a transfer from a general fund as revenue. So when you have to meet that ratio of a hundred and twenty percent, uh, if you can't add that general fund transfer in, it does you no good.
I appreciate, and I just heard a whisper and I agree, agree one thousand percent. I, 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 I agree with what you're saying and I, I appreciate the work you guys have put in here. But you, you've shown us a lot of information and I know when the time comes for me to say, well, you know, and I might not be here, but somebody's gonna ask the question, Mr. Nikosi might ask the question over there. What in the heck are we looking at? And you know, I don't remember what you told us two years ago. This a lot, this is, you guys are with it forty hours a week.
Yes, sir.
You know, yearly, we're in here, you know, one or two hours a month and you expect us to digest all this and understand it and say, we can make good decisions with this information that you gave us. You know, it's, it's difficult.
This is just a second of a set of briefings to explain this to you. At any point in time, if you wanna come in and meet one-on-one to discuss what we're talking about, we're more than happy to do this. This is an overview. This is an overview to let, let you start to understand where we're coming from. When we get into the budget process or we get into the utilities budget, the recommendation will show the things that you've given us the info, the feedback on, but we're not asking you to make those decisions.
Mr. Baines, but the always, the old comment we get back from staff is, well, we told you about it. You know, didn't you know? We told you about it.
You're, you're gonna hear from me a lot about this because I, uh, this is near and dear to my heart, and it'll be informative. So, I mean, we'll always answer the questions you have to make sure you feel like you're making an informed decision. That's just something that, uh, we will do. So in, in closing with what we have here is, we wanted guidance from y'all. I know we're talking 10 years, and like you said, gosh darn it, we can't tell what's gonna happen in five or six years. But, but the, well, the guidance is, we would like to start towards a plan that would include the 250 so we know that we've started to cover our meter fees. Let us adjust the sewer rate so anybody under 8,000 gallons won't see a change in their bill. People above 8,000 that are our big users will see a change in their bill. And then we're gonna have in our capital projects, these focused items that you know are out there. So we come to you and say, we're looking to either, uh, take money from the fund balance or we're gonna increase this, like the RO, uh, which one is it? One of them says the, um, reverse osmosis well number two. He's talking about capacity. We have a very small RO plant, but we only have one well out of two. One of them's bad already. We don't, we were gonna put a third one in, but it's way off on the property. It costs a lot to build all the infrastructure. We want to move up line number two back towards the plant, sink another well, and use all the existing infrastructure. It's already got all the pipes, it's got all the valves, it's got the power, it's got everything. All we gotta do is move it. But we don't know if that's true without getting your support to go out and do that investigation where you drill those test wells and you do those things. But we're trying to show you a process to move us forward without it being like, gosh, if you don't give us 34 million tomorrow, we can't get this done. We're trying to show you the steps we're making to improve what we have, and we can answer all the questions you have.
Uh, that's good. So, so the question is, how much is it gonna cost to do this phase design that you're saying that we need to do?
You can guess, if, if, if we're seeing the wells about a million dollars, you can guess that it's gonna be at least 10% and maybe 15% to get the, the engineers and design in to do it. So out of a million dollars, it'd be $100,000 to look for the new site for that well.
Hey, George, you mentioned the salinity issue with the crater issue.
Oh, yeah, well, okay, well.
That's part of that problem with the, with the wells.
So, and, and Chris can speak to this more. You know, the Chesapeake Bay, there was this big rock that kinda hit it, made a, made a hole. Well, one of our wells is in clean water. The other well is in the field, what's it called?
It's what's called the ejector blanket. It's all everything that the meteorite threw out on the, on the bottom of the Chesapeake Bay.
So all the, all the stuff it threw out of the hole, one of our wells is in that. So it brings up a lot of turbidity and a lot of stuff that we can't use. That's why that well's been shut down. But you don't know that when you first start. We, we, there were other things at the time, not that we're, we're not being thrifty because I believe everything we're telling you, we're doing the best we can with the money we have. But we've talked about it. That well was located where it was because it was on county property, and that's why we did it there. We didn't buy any other property. It happened to be after they did the test, how many years? It wasn't long before it started clogging up filters and, and doing things. You stopped using it, what, 20?
When the, the membranes were changed in the RO plant for the first time in 2009, the membrane manufacturer said, if you put that water on my membranes, you voided your warranty.
So it was in 2009, we found that that first, that well number two was no longer viable.
And they, and, and they have been doing much more deeper analysis of exactly where the meteor hit and the stuff that's been thrown out.
Right, where the dirt was thrown out.
Yeah.
So, thank you, Dr. Orth. I, I have to repeat myself. Right now, my eyes look like my bulldog's eyes. Glow, you know, he's got cataracts, and my eyes are just, got a cloud in front of them. And it's just a lot of information that we have to digest. But I appreciate your effort to come and tell the board incrementally.
Yep.
Whether it's us or whoever is on the board in the future that-
And, and, and a lot of this really, I mean, I, I'm sitting up here talking because I just like the technical side of it. But a lot of this is because Maria and Carol have worked so hard to try to find a way to make this work from a budgeting standpoint for y'all. I don't understand the numbers. All I understand is they tell me what I can do with the numbers, and I try to tell y'all, this is the best way to spend that money. I know what he's saying.
I think what Mr. Baines is trying to tell, or what we need to tell Mr. Baines is, come next year, for a basis for them developing the budget, do we want to do the 250 equipment fee? Do we want to look at the sewer tier structure? Do we want to start the public campaign? Then we'll start looking at the other items. That's all he's asking, like, they're just giving background. And we're not asking for a specific answer, but they're just saying, do we want to go ahead and proceed, Ms. Steel?
And if I can add, and if you think about our retreat last year, we sort of dropped a bomb on everybody talking about the condition of the utilities department. And we pledged to give you all a 20-year plan that would show how we could make it work. So that's what we've done, and it, you would be reviewing, and you're, it is a lot of information, but that's why this is the second night of doing it too, because we brought all these, and then you all had questions last time. And so they're trying to answer those, and since the last time it was presented to you, it was taken to the utilities committee, which is about where we're getting to.
Yeah. So I, I don't want to drag this on any longer, because I know our, our eyes are getting tired, and I'm, I'm just like you, Mr. Brazini, my eyes are starting to burn. But I will tell you, after-
It's the water. Mr. Brazini should have been with us Thursday night, George, when you were there for almost three hours.
It was quite the night, but, uh, and we debated a lot of these things because they had been so well-versed on it, they wanted to understand. So when we got done with this whole process, they, uh, had enough members there that they wanted to come back with basically, uh, uh, I don't know if we called it a resolution or a recommendation. So they came back with a recommendation going like, look, George, y'all are doing a great job. You're showing us these two increases in the, in the rates, you know, water, a dollar each, and then sewer, but there's two things that you've really left out of this that we're concerned about. Said one of them was that, um, inflation. You know, I said, oh, yeah, we got that tied in here, you know, 2.6%, we got inflation. They go like, but you don't understand. The work you're putting off is still gonna cost more. You've gotta start raising your rates to, to at least take care of inflation each year. We've never done that before. I really don't want to debate that tonight, but that's one of their suggestions was, you've gotta take into account inflation and include that in your rates. The second thing they did was, they said, look at this. You've done a great job of showing us 10 years, but at the end of 10 years, we've still got $27 million that you've gotta fix. You know, that's, doesn't show us that we've actually got to the end. We're just halfway there. So they're going like, if we're gonna do this, why don't we do this on something simpler than a dollar every other year? Why don't we do it at 50 cent a year after the initial dollar to get you started? And that's what you have in this little packet. It shows, uh, what we proposed is the page one. That shows, you know, FY '25, '26, '27, what we've talked about. If you flip to the second page, that was their recommendation. And basically, they say, this year, besides the $2.50 in the tiers, put the $1 on the, on the water side because we've gotta start paying our bills. We can't keep digging into the, you know, reserve fund because we're estimating 172 new homes. They haven't built those yet. And talking to, uh, the reserve the other day, they're 12 months out. They say it'll be 12 months where you see the signs up that say, come buy a house. So for us, it's gonna be a little further down the road. Yes, sir?
Years ago, when I lived in a house in Yorkshores, 20 years, 20 years ago, we, we had city water.
Right.
Come across our yard, and so we hooked up to it. And then the county poured concrete down my well, which really ticked me off because I wanted to use that well to water my garden well. Do you still do that today? Would you plug up?
No, sir. Uh, the health departments, the people who recommend what to do with those wells, and I would tell you, concrete's not the way we do it anymore, but they put, if they decide that that well is a concern, and you can now have agricultural wells. I mean, we have people who are on county water right now that water their lawns with a well. So you can do it, but it's just gotta be regulated so that the health department feels that what you've got meets their requirements. You know, you don't have a big open hole that, is your, you know, things are rolling down into your well or you're pouring-
Yeah, right. My well was in the garage.
And they still filled it in.
And they plugged it up.
Right, well.
And to my, to my dismay, because then I had to dig another well just to get water to water my lawn well.
Well, it may have been where it was in, 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 you know, adjacent to the water line going into the house. They may have thought that there was some concern there because I don't, I don't know that we do it at all anymore. I don't know if anybody was told to tell them they gotta plug their well.
No, we don't have a program to abandon wells when someone connects to public water.
So you've never had that program? So they inadvertently plugged my well?
I don't know what Gloucester did before 2014.
Okay. Yeah, that's right, yeah.
I, I have been involved in programs that did that, but it was on a voluntary basis, and it was for wellhead protection to prevent contamination of the shallower aquifers from chemicals accidentally discharged to the ground surface.
Yeah, and we, I, I do know that we do have some cap, like, or construction out here where they built, uh, uh, a shopping center on 17 and tied into water. The existing building, it had a well, and they had to, the health department made them cap that well because it was gonna be under a parking lot. So they had to do that. But in general, anybody that we hook up, if they've got a well, it's not our practice to tell them they've gotta, they've gotta get rid of the well. We just hooked them up to water. So on this page, you see, they recommend that we do a dollar this year. Then they start talking about a 50 cent increase each year after that, up through our 10 years, right? No, it says 10 years. I was just making sure, because 31 wasn't actually 10, but it gets us to there. So it's, it goes all the way to 34. What that does, instead of having 7.5 million at the end of 10 years, you've got 13 million. So that means we could start on some of those other next 10-year projects sooner, or we don't have to do as much debt financing. So, I mean, both those things allow you to do that. Yes, sir?
It's not listed, so I'm assuming it's not.
Right.
But 28 and 30, no increases or?
No, there are. You can see, that's what it said, flip to the next page.
Okay.
So the next page shows it by year, but that's what I was just asking her, is that shows each year.
Perfect.
She didn't mess up. It was this, we tried to make the same graph look the same.
No, makes total sense.
This one right here now shows you what the differences are, and it does start going up each year.
I believe you, you fussed at me for, for going ahead into this when you handed it out. So I quit looking when you fussed at me, so I didn't get to that page.
That's right. You would have known, right? You would have known. So this first one shows what we said before, and that's $16 over the 10 years. With the 50 cent rate, if you go to the next page, it shows at the end of 10 years, it's $38 for that customer as an increase from the 16. It still doesn't meet all of our needs, but that's the recommendation of the Utility Advisory Committee, and I'm sure Dr. Orth could talk to it more if you had any other questions. He was there the night they asked me all the questions. So was Chris. And, uh, again, Chris's wife had to text him and say, is George done talking yet so you can come home? But we did a good job, job that night, too. We, we worked out all the, all the questions.
Mr. Chair.
So, Mr. Brazini, if you look at your, your list, the very last page will show the rates with the new 50 cent per year, and it'll show you that instead of $16 over the 10 years, it'll be $38 over the 10 years for a customer. So it does go up a little faster, but I still don't believe at the end of that 10 years, we'll have all of our projects, capital projects paid for. It just accelerates it, and that was the recommendation of the Utility Advisory Committee. Like we said, we're looking for guidance. This doesn't have to happen tonight, but we wanted to see their recommendation versus ours.
George, you know, none of this accounts for the possibility of getting any kind of grants to help our system, you know, with-
We've mentioned on the pump stations, we have to look for grants, but anything on water or on the other sewer side? You know, Ms. Steel's talked to y'all. We're working with the Middle Peninsula for Grant Rider. We've got a third party that works with us on hazardous mitigation that's looking for grants. We're trying to go, go out on our own and look for grants. There's a lot of money out, I know. Thanks. But there's a lot of money out there, and we're gonna keep doing that so that every con, uh, conference we go to and find out there's money to be found, we're trying to get it. So we're trying to ease this, and if, let's say, the funding, I'm not gonna compare this to anybody else, but New Kent had a, a, an eight-year plan on doing rate increases. I talked to the utility director. After year six, they were making the point where they were at their benchmark, whatever it was. We got so much in our, our fund balance, they didn't have to do the, the rate increases the last two years. Just because we, we recommend it for 10 years doesn't mean it'll go for the whole 10 years. We could be efficient and find other ways to do things, and you only do it for seven years.
I've, I've noticed all evening long that Mr. Dawson has a smile on his face the whole time.
Ms. Steel.
It's more than that.
Because he's not gonna be doing this anymore after December.
That's a, that's a bittersweet situation.
Ms. Steel.
I think the advice that would be, um, most helpful for staff is, when would you want to look at this again and actually make some decisions? We're gonna have to have public hearings, and we had talked about this could be done at the budget time, but the more I thought about it, and I haven't even really talked to staff about it, but it's like, that's just too confusing to have the budget hearings for the budget and all this. So if there was a timeframe that, and, and that may include, um, looking at different options, but, you know, if you want to do it in March, if you want to do it in February, something so we would know what we're going for on the first year. And you don't, again, have to make that decision tonight, but I think that's the guidance that the staff needs to know is, when do you want to do something and actually take, take the first step of action?
You would have to bake that into the budget, your incremental steps.
We would, we're gonna bake in what we've said, but if the board wants to change it, either to, um, the recommendations from the advisory committee or something else, that would get, that could be advertised and changed at that time.
Yes.
Having sat on that committee before, Dr. Orth, um, I, I like what the Utility Advisory Committee is proposing simply because that's why we appoint those folks to those positions. The only concern that I have with the sewer side of things is there's another charge that comes to our sewer folks that we have no control over.
That's correct.
So I would like to see, if we could, between now and whenever we do this, the history of what HRSD has done, because we don't ever know what they're gonna do the next year until they meet and decide, and then they just go, oh, hey, by the way, here's a new rate, you know, you have no say over it, good luck, pay us, we're good. But I would like to see that if we have that.
You're absolutely right. In our first presentation, we didn't give you the numbers, but we just showed that theirs was going up while ours was laying flat. But we certainly can give you the percentage increase they had per year. But, yeah, they're, they, they bake it into their budget. They're just gonna give us a rate increase all the time.
There you go. So that would be nice to have, because maybe we, we look at something slightly different with the sewer perhaps.
Yep.
But I, I think moving forward, we need to start looking at this and go at the Utility Advisory Committee's, uh, suggestion as the cap.
Yep.
So if there's a whole lot of pushback, we still have, we, we can go down if we need to, but we won't go any higher than what the Utility Advisory's committee suggests.
Besides Dr. Orth, a lot of the discussion was with Mr. Brown, and he brought a lot to the table. So I appreciate his time that night to go through all this. Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Oh, yeah. We have a lot of people who, uh, ask questions. We're having a good time.
But so these are only based on your last sheet, only the ones that you're showing with water and sewer with the 50 cent each increase?
That, that's correct.
But you are taking into account, when you calculate the numbers, the 50 cent increase for just the water and then the 50 cent increase for the-
The finance lady knows how much each one of those generates, and she does it times the right number of years. So, yes, we'll, we'll make sure that number's correct, but you're right, for the ones where it says 50 cent for sewer, you're seeing the amount of increase, the amount of increase for a water slash sewer customer. The ones that are water only would not see all that.
There was, um, also, that did not, doesn't appear to have printed, but there was an arrow pointing down from 20, fiscal year 28 down, that that was happening every single year. Because at that point, the recommendation would be 50 cent on both each year.
But you're right, Ms. Hudson. If you want us to give you the number for the total increase or the water only, I can get to that number. Okay, so this, the 38 is for a water slash sewer customer. We'll get to one for water only.
Well, I'm going back to the $4 for the first year monthly fee. You've got 250 technology fee, dollar for water, and 50 cent sewer?
No, sewer restructure. And the reason that doesn't change is because it's based off of 5,000 gallons, and it would not affect a person at 5,000 gallons on sewer.
But then 250 plus one is-
So the 250 on the left-hand side is already included. So that, so we were-
Oh, that's for 5, so the $4 is for 5,000 gallons. You take the dollar times, you know, for-
The 250 is already included in the beginning number, so that's only the actual rate increase.
Any question? Any question?
Thank you all for letting us bring you up to date on the information. Any other questions, please provide it to us. We'll get you the information. It's like we do with connection fees and water leaks. So anything else you want to know, we're more than willing to provide to you. So, uh, so this year, with our water demands, with the leaks and everything else we have, we're controlled on how much water we can pull from our RO wells. We're coming up on the capacity of our permit right now. So what we're doing is, starting next week, we're gonna turn off our RO well for a month. And to make the water- month, and to make the water we need, we're going to be running our water, the surface water plant twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Now, I've replaced most all the pumps out there, but we don't have all of our, all of our spares back in. But we've got to do that, so we don't go over on our RO permit. So we'll be working our guys, it's about two hundred and fifty-six hours of overtime. The super, supervisor has to work every day to do the overlap, because they're doing twelve-hour shifts, we can't give them any overlap time. We're going to see how it goes, but we've got to stay under that permit. So you'll...
Is this regulating the permit? The state?
State Department of Environment Quality.
And we can't ask them to, to increase the capacity of our RO plant, just by saying, "Hey, you're, you're, you're stressing us here, help us out."
We are, we are doing that, too.
Their, their answer will be to submit an application for a new permit for an increased withdrawal amount. We are not, have not, uh, are not having an issue with the daily withdrawal amount, we're not having an issue with the monthly withdrawal amount, it's that annual withdrawal amount of twenty-four, of two hundred and forty-two point two million gallons, that we're, we're at two hundred and twelve now. So we're looking at, you know, about twenty million, uh, a month for the next two months, that's what would take us, two fifty. My past experience with DEQ was with a, in, in a situation like this, was a subdivision that was served by groundwater that violated their annual amount by fifteen hundred dollars.
Fifteen hundred gallons.
By fifteen hundred gallons, and the compliance officer was more, was smiling when he gave me the fine for thirty-five thousand dollars.
Oh, my God. For fifteen hundred gallons, we'd be millions over, so we're trying not to get there. And, and, and you're right, they don't allow us just to write a memo, they want us to ask for additional groundwater. Chesapeake's doing the same thing right now, we get to see, they come through, they're trying to pull another forty-five million gallons a day out of the same aquifer we are in, and they send it out to everybody, and you've got to get all this review process. We're going to be past all that before we can actually have any of that.
Are they concerned we're going to suck all the water out of the ground? Is that what they're concerned about?
Um, for us, yes. So what they're doing is, all these different people, the aquifer we're in, now this is just George Baines, the engineer, the two largest people that have access to the same aquifer we do, the Potomac, are the two pa, paper mills. And they draw so much, that when you see the, the graphs underground, right around those wells, they pull so much more than the rest of us. But they've been approved to do that, just like we have, so we all kind of share that aquifer, and we try to stick to our permits. Uh, Ms. Steele went last week or last month to a plant called a Swift Plant, where HRC's trying to say that the stuff, after they've gone through a multi-treatment process, they're going to try to inject that water back into this aquifer, because we're using too much. And, and, you know, my simple thing is, we don't want to get to the point where we're sucking on the straw we've got, and we're just sucking air. That won't work for us.
I, I think the, the point is, we were using that method to produce water, because that was what we had to do.
Right.
And if, and I, if I'm wrong, then please correct me, but my understanding, it's not that we're just producing more and more water because we've had all this growth, it's because we couldn't do the other, because we've had problems with equipment, and that's what happens. And if we, if the plant had been running in tip-top shape, we could've done either-or, but we've relied on this, and so we are, that's my understanding, that we're now kind of stuck with this, and this is one of the reasons why we need these plans, and we need to keep our equipment in the best shape it can be.
So George, I mean, so we're under the decree for how much we can pump from the aquifer, but you think about how many people have wells, and what, you know, they pull...
Yes, but our, our aquifer's fifteen hundred feet down. We're in a very deep one, so we're not affecting any of the, so yeah, we're, anybody in the county, if your well's going dry, it's not because of us. We're much deeper than any of the wells that people are drawing right now, even a couple hundred-feet-deep wells.
Fifteen hundred feet?
Yeah. Yes, sir. They, these are deep wells. When the pump broke out there, you got to bring a crane in, because you got to pull fifteen hundred feet of, you know, uh, uh, the motor and all of the parts are fifteen hundred feet down, and they pull it out in sections and take it apart and just keep pulling it up. So it's, it's quite a process to even repair one of these. I think it costs us twenty-three thousand dollars just to get the pump taken out of the hole, taken out of the hole. It's, but anyway.
Mr. Bizani, to answer your question, we are in contact with the DEQ permit staff to explain the situation to them and ask, short of submitting a brand-new permit application, what can we do to address the situation? Hopefully, we will find out that there is something, short of running the plant twenty-four hours a day or submitting that new permit application, and we won't have to do this for the next thirty days.
But I, I remember we were talking about groundwater, and, and you had to have a slide rule to figure out what the formula was, and, you know, and explaining it to a board of supervisors, my goodness.
That, and, uh, another interesting fact is, once we have AMI completed, they add a ten percent to our permit without us having to apply for a new permit. So as we get AMI in, the amount of water we can draw from this RO well goes up by ten percent, another twenty-four million gallons. But that's not today, it's going to help us until we get the AMI in. Any other questions? Thank you all, I'm sorry it took so long, we wanted to make sure you guys are starting to get the information, like I said...
It's two hours less than last Thursday.
Yeah, then, yeah, then last Thursday, yeah. Thank you all, yeah.
Thank you. George?
I, I just wanted to let you know that I really enjoyed going through this two or three times.
I bet you did. Hey, when, when Maria added the forty-nine pages, it was the, the HRC, so I said, "Oh, my gosh," you know, there's a lot of technical stuff in there, too, but yeah, yeah, absolutely. But thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Marriott. Will you show him that?
Ah, yes, of course.
So, Mr. Chair, I got to say, being on the Utilities Committee for all these past years, this was one impressive presentation by George the other night. We were captivated for three, up two and a half hours.
Thank you, staff. Let's, let's go to the discussion and adoption of the county's legislative agenda. Ms. Steele, I know, um, Mr. Crisco and I had the pleasure earlier today to talk to the newly-elected delegate, Green, and let him know of our preliminary, um, legislative agenda items. So, Ms. Steele.
I have made changes that we discussed, and I am, it's, it was presented for your consideration, and glad to make any additional changes that we'd like to do, but the idea is of hope that you can adopt this, and we'll have this for NACO, and we'll continue to work with our legislators to get some things done.
This, this doesn't allow us to pick the page number out?
It's on the, oh, it's on the right-hand side.
On the right-hand side?
On the right-hand side, about a third of the way up. You see a little box?
Oh, there it is. Okay, thank you.
It's page one fifty-two. It's where it starts. Any questions about it?
Let me take a peek real quick.
You have it.
We have it.
Yeah.
Where's the part with Golden Bridge?
So on page one fifty-four, at the bottom. And we had a, a long discussion about that today, too, so that we can get some legislative support on looking at how to save...
Thank you, that's good.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the draft agenda that is presented to us.
On page one fifty-one?
Yes, one fifty-one.
That's the resolution.
Resolution, sorry. Second.
Y'all can fight over here at the second. Wait a second.
Mike can.
No, it's Mike's. He's got two, a month left.
Get him in the minutes.
From now on, no seconds unless it's Mike. And he can do some, make the motions, but if he doesn't make the motion, you get the second.
Very generous, thank you.
For you, anything, Bob. Okay, um, yeah, let's poll the board, Ms. Steele.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that was seconded, Bob, Mr. Hedrick. Okay, just checking. Next item on the agenda is a discussion of possible agenda topics for our board retreat. Page one fifty-seven.
Yes, sir, and, uh, Mr. Chair, in addition to the items that are listed, two other things have come up for possible discussion. One is a potential closed session for acquisition, just, and, or disposition of real property, which we'll work with the county attorney on that, if you would like to add that as a closed session. And then also, an update on the school bus camera program and how that is going. So, there, there are too many items with the estimated time, and I had mentioned that hopefully you all could go through the list, and if there's a consensus of priority items or something, we can, we'll carry forward what we don't get to until other meetings, to other meetings.
Mr. Crisco.
We still are going to keep our ag, uh, agenda, holy smokes, our, um, retreat in January as well, correct? Or we're going to do away with that?
This, I think we had decided that you all wanted to do them in the fall each time to get ready for the coming up budget year and all.
Look, I, I think if, if we want to have one in January, February would be a good idea, but I think this one was, especially this year with a new member or members at the time.
Correct.
It was good.
I, I think we should look at anything, everything that has a potential budget impact should be looked at...
In November.
In November. Because I would hate to be looking at it in January, February, when you're a third or a quarter of the way through getting all your budget numbers, to have something else thrown in there. I think anything and everything that could be budget-related needs to be handled on the thirtieth.
And, Ms. Cronin, I, I suggested that we get with Sheriff Warren for the discussion on security for board meetings, not just to include ours, but to get him to get a memo of what he thought meetings should be available? Or do you feel that we need a representative of the sheriff's office at our meeting at the retreat? Not to discuss this, not to be there? What are y'all's thoughts?
One way in the audience.
All right, we'll start, like I said earlier, we'll start with just a memo, and we'll go from there.
So, Mr. Chair, are you proposing that we skip the January, February? Are we, are we going to do one, or just wait till November of next year?
No, we're going to wait and see after this one how it goes.
Yeah, I, I think, honestly, looking at this...
It's only four days, based on Ms. Steele's timeline.
Sure, I know, and that's, I mean, you know, we, we looked at possibly doing them, you know, at budget, at budget, gee, man, I'm tired, at our work sessions, but I, I think we, we, we cherry-pick this, do anything with the budget impact, get through as much as we can on top of that, and then we decide at the end of the day, all right, we made it to number six, we need to have another retreat, or if we get to nine, great, the other two become work session items. I, I think that's, that, I think that's the easiest way for us to, to move through this. Just my two cents.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Uh, but I will say that, um, you know, if we're looking at budget items, I think that we've gone over this tonight, we could go utilities again, that's an additional item, it's not even in the top eleven, but we went over it tonight. It might be a little while to go over it roughly again, if we have any questions based on tonight's, and then go. So, like Mr. Crisco said, there's a lot of items here, and there's more that we've touched base on over the last few years that we haven't been able to accomplish. So I think we need to leave January just open. And I, I do think that, I know last year we had it in February, but I think it needs to move back to January, because February got so late.
It's too far into the...
Year.
Sounds good.
So I just...
Get out of the no...
Can we, wait a second, I think it might be better to have one in November and one in December.
So, can I ask a quick question? What's the dilapidated structure? Are we talking about taking down ugly-looking buildings along seventeen? Is that what that is? Against the owner's wishes?
It is for the board to look at what current policies you have, and making sure as you're facing the upcoming ordinance modifications, whether you've addressed the things. There have been numerous complaints made about the appearance of Route Seventeen, especially at Gloucester Point. And so it's for the board to, to look at those items.
So who's going to be the dilapidated police?
Well, we...
Who's going to make that subjective judgment?
I think it's the, the board would look at, do you want to do any more code enforcement or not? And, I mean, we've got some businesses that are calling and complaining and saying that their business is being hurt, and we've got, you know, so it's, it's really what the board wants to do with it.
Are we going to tell the owner to take the building down at his expense?
We'll know that November thirtieth.
Right, I think you go through the whole conversation.
There's a lot of items we've got to discuss.
Okay.
That's...
Those are the questions, though.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's absolute questions we've got to answer, that's why it's not something...
And I, I definitely consider that a budget matter, because one of the positions that we're looking is, do we need another code enforcement person or not?
All right. Any other items, is there any other items that you're thinking about that might need to be added? Ted, one other FOIA, can we do those, that? What is the thing that we have to do by December, Trish, Ms. Cronin?
So the requirement for the board members to complete Freedom of Information Act training, Conflict of Interest training, it, when it started, you had two years, you have to complete it within two years from the last time that you completed it, so each board member kind of has a rolling, um, due date.
So I know our first one, we had Mr. Wilmot with, uh, FOIA and Conflict of Interest.
That was before they instituted the new program, that it has to be the...
I didn't know if he could do it.
...training provided, well, he could provide it, but it has to be the training that the FOIA council provides to Mr. Wilmot.
So a real lawyer has to do it.
This is online training.
They would train me.
They would, they would give you the materials, and then you could train the board.
That's interesting.
Are you trainable?
Just did mine.
I'm happy to provide the...
Just send your email.
Ms. Cronin will let you know.
Yes, let me know if I can provide the required training, and I would confer with them to see what they think FOIA means.
Um, any more, any more thoughts on the Retreat Act, uh, items?
Three-day retreat now, and seven and a half hours.
Oh, no. Since when?
Well, and, I, I'm, I'm looking at some of these things, and I, I think that some of these things will not take quite as long as we have anticipated as well. Um, but I, I, I'm all in favor of this list, and I'm in favor of scheduling another retreat if we only get through number five.
Mm-hmm. All right. Let's move to the next item, board appointments. Page one fifty-seven. Page one fifty-nine. Okay, we've got Board of Equalization, Kay Van Dyke, she wishes to be reappointed.
Second.
Um, Economic Development Authority, David Meeker. Make the motion.
Second.
Um, Mr. Gibson, anybody for Historical Committee?
No one for that committee.
Okay, Parks and Rec, we have...
I'll make the motion that we approve all three.
Okay, but you can't second it.
Second.
You said I had to make the motion.
I know, I know, I know. I'm just playing with Mike. Tourism Committee, Robert Kelly.
I'll make the motion to reappoint Mr. Kelly.
Mike, second. Second.
Okay. Utility, Dr. Orth. All right, um, Ms. Steele, we poll, no, we can do this. All in, yes, sir.
I have one thing for Mr. Gibson.
Interest, I, I have someone who is not in your district who may like to be in the historic committee. Can't do it?
That, that would be fine.
Okay. I'll, I'll email you his particulars.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Go ahead.
All right.
Do, do we need to check those bylaws and make sure that's all right, Mr. Wilmot? Is it okay?
He's not in Mr. Gibson's district, but he's in my district.
I was going to say, I was right in note to do that, but the historical committee has a range of membership too. So I think that there could be an extra member potentially.
I'll check. I think it's kosher. I'll check.
Okay.
Let me know.
County attorney items?
Just one sec while I break this down.
Happy to be here.
Yeah. I have a big...
You're welcome.
Not Mr. Gibson.
All right, I look forward to the retreat on the 30th. I have, I've not been requested to head any of the topic discussions, however, I anticipate having materials ready for your discussion on dilapidated structures, number three, discussion of wetlands board. I believe I sent you each a memo on that, number seven, short-term rentals, number eight, and land bank entity, number 11. I'll have materials from the legal perspective prepared and available and be prepared to discuss and answer questions on each of those. If it's requested that I provide further information on any topic or there are any questions on any topic, I would appreciate a heads-up ahead of time. Otherwise, I'll be ready on those and whatever else you want me to do.
Well, I think since it was brought up, it might be a good idea to see what can and can't be done with dilapidated structures.
Yes, sir. I said that would be...
Oh, did you?
Yes, sir, that, number three. I already have that ready and I will have it with me.
Okay.
Outstanding.
Boards and commission, you're not happy to be here?
Oh, I'm very happy to be here.
Okay. Boards and commission reports.
I got one for you. Um, just so everyone in the county is aware, I met with the metal planners of the Planning District Commission last month and our good friends at VDOT have finally decided to score the Woods Cross, Woods Cross Road intersection in their highway safety plan, highway safety improvement plan. It hadn't been in that plan or scored in that plan, but it has now scored over six, which now makes that eligible for highway safety improvement, uh, program fund money. I believe that that money will be coming available and instead of a six-year timeline, I would expect that R-cut to be going in sometime in the next three years.
And not a stoplight instead?
Not under consideration. Don't ask them about it. Don't talk to them about it. Highway Safety Improvement Program has scored this intersection at what it's scored at now. And I do not see us being able to stop them from putting in an R-cut.
I, I understand what you're saying, but you're, we're expecting a couple more deaths before they decide to put a, a stoplight there?
So when the funds become available, they're already, with, with what we were looking at with Smart Scale, they had said that we could take up to six years. But now with the H-SIP funding that they've put this project through and scored it, it now scores at a level that that, once that amount of money comes through and they expect it to come through within the next three years, they will move forward with the project. Engineering, I believe, engineering and design studies have started this week and will run through sometime in February off and on. And then once the funds become available to be built...
So are they going to slow the traffic down when they do this R-cut? Or this, you're going to come down at 60 miles an hour?
They, they, they haven't, that, that's not even...
That's another, that's another death trap.
The money's been approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Hadrick?
Yes, I would like to add to this discussion that they feel very strongly, and correct me, Mr. Crisco, if I'm mistaken, that the R-cut will be safer than a red light. And they've, they've provided evidence to that to satisfy a number of the members of the Planning District Commission.
Well, no, they just more or less told us what they were going to do. I mean, they didn't ask us for any, any, any further input. My problem with the whole situation up there was that I was told during the meeting that when it went through the H-SIP the first time, it was scored less than one and now it's greater than six. I've come to realize and have been told since then that it was never scored for H-SIP until after we decided we did not want the R-cut as a board and refused the funding for it. So then they put it through the H-SIP program to get the funding for it.
You reminded them that two people just recently got killed there?
No, they, 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 they get that data weekly.
Okay.
Supervisor discussion?
I just got one thing. I know it's been a long meeting. It won't take but a second, but I just want to commend staff on the sewer and water information and our advisory committee for bringing forth something that, I'm sorry, Mr. Maury has left, but bringing forward something that will officially end the flushing of my money down other people's toilets, that Don Mitchell used to tell us every time he came to a meeting, a way to make the utilities very self-sufficient. I got to give you guys kudos for all the hard work that you've put in to get that done and to us in a relatively quick fashion because that's a lot of information. And I think we have a path forward to making that thing more liquid.
We're solid.
Anything?
Either or.
Uh, anybody else for supervisor discussion? All right, um, no close meeting, adjournment.
Second. Emotion, adjourn. Oh, no, no, Mike, you made it.
Emotion or...
Yeah, emotion.
I'm opposed to... Adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.